Will be for Rhonda Shaw for service on Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. And I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Rhonda Shaw has served the City of Pacifica as an Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commissioner from 2002 through October 2019, acting as chair and voting member during the course of her service on the commission. And whereas these 17 years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, working towards the betterment of the community through the promotion of disaster preparedness at events including the annual Pacific Coast Fog Fest and San Mateo County Disaster Preparedness Day. And whereas, Rhonda has been a pillar of the Pacifica Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, program since 2013, serving as an instructor and volunteer coordinator. As a registered nurse, she helped establish the first CERT medical branch in San Mateo County, composed of CERT volunteers with formal medical training and experience who mobilized to assist Pacifica during a disaster. And whereas, in her six years as a CERT volunteer coordinator, she participated, planned, or coordinated several drills and exercises at the local, county, and regional levels designed for CERT volunteers. And whereas, through the performance of her duties and responsibilities as a member of the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, she has made constructive contributions to emergency preparedness in our city by educating the community on the important safety and disaster preparedness topics. And whereas Rhonda Shaw's commitment to this city and the community deserves special recognition and appreciation, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica, on behalf of all of its citizens, hereby extends our sincere appreciation and thanks to Rhonda Shaw for her 17 years of dedicated and distinguished voluntary service to the City of Pacifica, done this ninth day of December 2019.
Rhonda, did you want to go to the podium? Eric say anything?
I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve Pacifica. I love this city and still do, even though I don't live here anymore. It's been a wonderful experience and thank you. Thank you so much.[738.44][738.44](APPLAUSE)
And Rhonda, I really want to thank you. I didn't get to serve with you for very long, but I want you to know that during the time when I did serve with you, you just completely inspired me. So thank you so much.
Thanks for your service, Rhonda. You're truly an inspiration to many, and I think a lot of your fellow commissioners would say the same. And thanks for your service.
Seventeen years to do something is an eternity, so thank you so much.[778.12][778.12](LAUGHTER)
Having my first committee in Pacifica was the disaster preparedness, and I know what it's like, and I have to commend this one, this committee, because they've really been getting, expanding their horizons and doing more for the citizens. You know, of course, the world has kind of changed too, for, you know, given the disasters, but thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you very much, especially for your work with CERT. I think that's going to just service forever because it continues on, so thank you. I'm going to get a picture with you, Rhonda.
Do any of the commissioners want to say anything?
Well, I just want to say, you know, I've worked with Rhonda...
Go to the podium, TV can get you.
Hi, I'm one of the commissioners, I'm Evelyn, and I've worked with Rhonda over probably five, six years now, both in CERT and then on the commission, and she's an inspiration. With her leadership, especially with CERT, it has just expanded. Every like quarter, they have 20 to 30 people that go through the program, and so that's remarkable. And Rhonda gives her heart and soul to it, and on the commission, she was always like a person of wisdom and calmness. So Rhonda, it's been just incredible being able to work with you and learn from you.[877.44][877.44](APPLAUSE)
The next proclamation is for Police Captain Joe Spanheimer. Congratulations and best wishes to Captain Joe Spanheimer. Whereas Captain Spanheimer is retiring from a distinguished public service career with the Pacifica Police Department, serving most recently as a police captain with the Pacifica Police Department. And whereas Captain Spanheimer has served over 26 years with the Pacifica Police Department, beginning with his appointment to police officer in July 1993, promoted to the rank of police corporal in July of 1999, police sergeant in December of 2002, and police captain in October of 2011, serving as acting chief of police from November 2014 through February 2015, completing his career at the rank of police captain, and serving in the positions of police academy training officer, class SB 32, detective sergeant, field training officer, and SWAT team member. And whereas Captain Spanheimer has demonstrated superior law enforcement skills and community relations ability, resulting in 110 letters of appreciation and formal department commendations. And whereas Captain Spanheimer has served as emergency manager for the city, attaining a high level of expertise in this field, has brought the position of emergency manager to a high level of efficiency and competence, bringing the CERT program to the highest level of participation since its inception, and has served as an expert for emergency management-related issues throughout San Mateo County and regionally. And whereas Captain Spanheimer has demonstrated dedication to the education of law enforcement officers and potential law enforcement candidates through work as a police academy instructor, department defensive tactics instructor, and facilitator at the University of Phoenix. And whereas Captain Spanheimer has become a highly respected instructor in the field of active shooter response, both for law enforcement professionals and community members, and was selected as one of the department's first active shooter instructors in the year 2000, training officers countywide in active shooter response techniques, and also creating and presenting curriculum on this topic for City of Pacifica employees and community members. And whereas Captain Spanheimer was the Pacifica Police Department's first recipient of the prestigious California Highway Patrol 10851 award, presented to those meeting requirements that demonstrated an expertise in the recovery of stolen vehicles and the apprehension of vehicle theft suspects. And whereas Captain Spanheimer has left an enduring legacy on the City of Pacifica and the law enforcement profession through his tireless efforts and commitment towards improving public safety, quality of law enforcement services provided to the community, and the training of law enforcement personnel. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica, on behalf of all of its citizens, hereby extends our grateful thanks and appreciation to Captain Spanheimer for over 26 years of dedicated and distinguished service to the City of Pacifica, and we wish him all the best in his future endeavors, done this ninth day of December 2019.
Mayor, council members, city staff, citizens, fellow department employees, fellow police officers, brothers and sisters, thank you. You know, up until about half hour ago, I was not emotional at all.[1242.14][1242.14](LAUGHTER) So, you know, it's been a wonderful 26 and a half years, really has. You know, there's a saying about, you know, if you do something you like, it's not work. And it really hasn't been. Before I go on though, I really want to thank somebody special. My wife, Michelle.[1271.58][1271.58](APPLAUSE) Since we've been married over 29 years now, she's my wife. While I was in the Marine Corps, she was in the Navy. And so, you know, while in the Marine Corps, you know, I got deployed over at Desert Storm and starting out early in my law enforcement career, and through a good majority of it, seems like, you know, she raised our family almost single-handed. And speaking of family, my son Patrick is here. He's also a Marine, he's a, he works for county.[1313.58][1313.58](APPLAUSE) My daughter couldn't make it unfortunately, she just got off work too late. Anyway, they're all, their support, their understanding, and obviously Michelle's a very strong, patient woman, so couldn't have done it without her. You know, the environment here in Pacifica has been awesome, and, you know, not talking about the fog.[1341.14][1341.14](LAUGHTER) You know, just cruising up and down Highway 1, down Sharp Park Road, there's this one turnout, it's a third turnout past Gypsy Point, you see Maury Point, it's one of the most beautiful sights in California, I think, and that's been awesome. Really though, it's been the people I've worked with, you know, at the police department, fellow city staff, citizens, people I work for, the citizens I work for, you know, it's been great. You know, even, you know, I used to make quite a few arrests when I was an officer on the street, and, you know, even some of those people have turned out to be really amazing people.[1380.57][1380.57](LAUGHTER) I remember I had a ride along with my son many years ago, and some guy stopped me outside Starbucks, and I didn't recognize him, but he said, "Hey Sergeant Spanheimer, hey, thank you." You know, and, you know, he said, you know, I helped turn his life around. You know, something we at the police department, you know, have a chance to do that, you know, many don't, and I really cherish that, it was amazing. It's been an environment that's challenged me, as, you know, Pacifica does have some challenges ahead of it, but it's also been an environment where I could grow and really flourish. So it's a place where if you want to work hard, you know, good things can come to you, and I, hopefully they have, and hopefully I've had a chance to pay back and make a difference here. So again, thank you, everybody.[1430.00][1430.00](APPLAUSE) Don't go anywhere, we're not done with you.[1443.42][1443.42](LAUGHTER) Madam Mayor, council members, colleagues, staff, and community members, I'm Dan Stidl, I'm your chief of police. Taking this opportunity to say a few words about Captain Spanheimer, because anybody knows Captain Spanheimer knows he does not like the attention.[1458.74][1458.74](LAUGHTER) And he agreed to do this, our city policy says he doesn't have to do this, so I'm going to keep it short and not embarrass him too much. So Captain Spanheimer and I started our career together about, with the Pacifica Police Department about four months apart. So we've known each other a long time, we've come through the ranks together, we started out as young officers, working the beat together, and yeah, he arrested a lot of people, it was very difficult, difficult to keep up with him. But along those lines, he was an excellent mentor to all of us, back in the days when we were patrol officers, including today. He's my second in command, he's my captain, and I still learn from him every day. He's an excellent role model. If you're the chief and you're looking for that officer or that person, regardless of rank, that you want to be the face of your police department. When things are good, or when things are bad, when things are easy, when things are controversial, when you need someone to speak to the council, when you need somebody to speak at a public meeting, this is the person that you want, in front of that microphone or in front of those people in your community. He exemplifies with his demeanor, work ethic, and dedication exactly what a peace officer should be. For the last four years, I've had the pleasure of being your chief and working with Joe as my second in command, and my senior second in command, and I've really appreciated not only his friendship, but his advice. He's been the type of second in command, the captain that will nudge me along if I'm doing the right thing, tell me this is good, this is good, or maybe if I'm not being so smart with something, he'll pull me aside and say, "Boss, I don't think we should be doing that." So, and that's exactly the type of leader or second in command that you want. So, Joe, I just want to thank you for your service, thank you for your friendship, and even more thank you for what you've done for the last 26 years, for the people that are sitting here in this room, which is why we do this job.
Okay, I'll go. Captain Spanheimer, thank you so much. You know, I feel like I've kind of taken your presence for granted, you know, because you've always been there, and so you've had this way of just making me feel safe all the time. And I can remember you came in to do Teen Driver Safety Night a long time ago. You came in and filled Captain Bertini's shoes, and he was just very outgoing, you know, running around the room, and I knew that you were like uncomfortable, and you did such a great job. So you stepped up, you've continued to do that, and I really appreciate you, and I'm going to miss you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Captain Spanheimer. I am glad I'm on the right side of the law here with you.[1638.42][1638.42](LAUGHTER) And I wasn't one of your earlier arrests, but thank you for everything. I, I wish you well in your future, your future life, it's just beginning, so thanks for a wonderful end here in Pacifica.
And I really got to know more about you when we went to the Active Shooter Training Day, which was an incredible thing. If anybody ever wants to get involved, it's really amazing, and to learn that you actually started it and produced it and did all the work towards that, it's pretty amazing. Thank you.
I don't know what you can say, we're not used to microphones at work, is one thing, but, but Captain Spanheimer, I would say anytime I've had interactions with him at council level, not professionally, he has been very professional. And it always seems that like if there was something coming by that needed to be done, he stepped up to the plate. I mean, I know he was the lausanne for CERT and spent a lot of times, really built that program up, till we have over, what, 230 volunteers, more, more, you know, in CERT, and I think we have one of the, most of our classes are full, and when he does those, and they, we have some of the largest, I believe, on the peninsula. And given the topography and what we face here in Pacifica, that's really important, that's a legacy that he will be leaving. He's also done many, many other projects that I know, he is very well-respected on the peninsula, and I think he's looked at as kind of the Buddha, you know, of the peninsula in terms of police with all knowledge, and I mean that in a respectful, pleasant way. And I think he will be missed by the department. We saw an example the other day, the last meeting of one of the brand-new officers that's been here maybe three or four months, and she received an award from a domestic violence group because of how she handled a particular case, and that does come from the leadership, mentoring the employees and the new recruits, and also their companions mentoring them and training them. But I think, thank you, Captain Spanheimer, for your 26 years of service. But I think, thank you, Captain Spanheimer, for your 26 years of service and all the good you have done in Pacifica. And you are leaving a big legacy of the SERT volunteers and all, everything else you've done. So, thank you.
I want to thank you on a personal note. Your 26 years here are the same number of years I've been here. So, the whole time I've lived in Pacifica and raised my family here, you were here. So, it's very hard for me to imagine Pacifica without you. I feel like someone said already, we take you for granted on some level. But I'm really aware of what you've done for us and how well, how well our department functions because of you. So, thank you.
And are there other officers who would like to say something?
Or members?
Or members of the public? And I'd like to tell the people in back that there are plenty of parking, parking, really.
Parking places up front.
There's plenty of seating in front. There may not be plenty of parking, but there are seats.
And maybe raise your hand if there's an empty seat next to you.
Of course.
Like, so many seats.
So, Captain Spanheimer and your family, thank you very much. You've definitely been an image and a presence and an inspiration for Pacifica. So, I've been on council for 16 years, and I've been able to go to some of your awards that you've received and really made Pacifica proud. And thank you for your service in the Marine Corps as well. God bless your family.
I'm, is it, I'm Horace Henshaw. And I just wanted to express my appreciation and thanks to Captain Spanheimer for his many years of professionalism to the police department. I've been privileged to work with him over the years, first as a reporter with the Tribune and then later as the editor of the Pacifica Tribune. We've had many discussions over the year about activities that are happening. You know, it pays for the news media to have a great relationship with the police department. And in Pacifica, we probably have the best in the county. We have a great relationship, and it's due to Captain Spanheimer over the years. And now Chris Clements is coming on, so we expect the great things out of Chris. But Captain Spanheimer has been tremendous. We want to wish him the best as he goes about his future endeavors. He has a lot of irons in the fire, he can do almost anything. And wherever he goes, I just wish him a lot of success. Congratulations and great retirement.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm Brad Kids. I'm a part of the Pacifica SERT program here in Pacifica. And, you know, I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of being a part of the Pacifica SERT program. Thank you, Ted.
A little closer.
Get closer.
I'm very proud to be a part of the Pacifica SERT program, because I believe it's one of the best SERT programs in the Bay Area. And in fact, based on a visit to an international SERT conference that Joe and I went to a while back, I think the Pacifica SERT program is one of the best in the whole world. And there are a lot of little reasons for that, but there's one very big reason, which is Captain Spanheimer here. About six or eight years ago, Joe took over the SERT program, and he decided to build it into something, whoa, he decided to build it into something that was really good. So, he brought in new people, he brought in a lot of programs, he brought in, he brought us a whole trailer full of medical supplies, which makes this a great SERT program. So, as resident of Pacifica, I'm really pleased that we have, I really feel secure that we have 300 people around town who have been trained in how to help themselves and help each other in the event of an emergency. And that's all due, I mean, it's due to a lot of people, actually. It's due to Sergeant Longeville and a lot of instructors, but it's due to one very big reason, which is Joe. So, thank you, Joe.
Go ahead. And can all the officers come back for the picture, please? And if all of the officers can come forward and the employees?
I'm just going to tell you. Joe has put up with me because I'm a person who likes to hug, and he's always the ultimate Marine, but he has been so polite and sweet to me. Thank you, Michelle.
If all of you could come forward, we're going to take a picture with everyone.
All the officers?
Yep. Thank you very much for all being here. The next item is the consent calendar. I don't have any cards from the public regarding the consent calendar.
Are you moving to approve the consent?
So moved. Is there a second?
All second.
How do you want to do this, Sarah? Raise hands, say aye, what? Those council members in favor of approving the consent calendar as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The consent calendar passes with a vote of five approving, zero noes.
Thank you. Next is oral communications. And we have four cards for oral communications. Before I begin, we recognize that there may be a significant number of speakers on this item, on all of the items on the agenda. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I will be reducing the speaking time to two minutes on all of the items on the agenda. And we request that speakers avoid repetition of views already expressed. We also ask that you make your comments directly to the council and not to the audience. After the public hearing has been closed, we will not take additional comments, so please take the opportunity to speak during the public hearing. And the cards are Anita Reese, Chris Sturkin, David, Whitney, and Tiger Jazz Big Stick. And I'll call your names again after the person spoke.
Hello, my name is Anita Reese, and I'm the Director of the Pacifica Resource Center. I just wanted to give you all some updates. We are in the process of our Holiday Joy Program, which is matching families who need support over the holidays with generous sponsors from the community. Distributions are starting on December 14th, this Saturday, and continuing through the holidays. We also are starting our tax program in January. This is no-cost tax preparation by volunteers who are IRS-certified to prepare taxes, saving folks the cost of preparing taxes. And we'll be, we'll be starting on January 25th, which is a Saturday, that's our launch. And then we'll be continuing Monday mornings and Wednesday afternoons and evenings through April 22nd. And the first 50 folks who save at least $50 and split their refund will receive a $20 gift card as an incentive to using this opportunity to save. So, if you or anybody you know wants to get their taxes done for free and possibly get a $20 gift card for saving, please call us at 650-738-7470. We are taking appointments as soon as folks want to make them. We'll also be doing work on the census 2020 to make sure that all Pacificans are counted during the census. You can complete your census as early as mid-March, so do it early and make sure you do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris, followed by David and Tiger Jazz.
Good evening, Council. My name's Chris Sturkin, Community Outreach Specialist with Hip Housing. And I have here a couple guests, Rose Louis and her daughter Melanie Louis. And Melanie is one of our winners for our annual calendar contest. And so, just a little bit about what we do here. We invite kindergarten through fifth graders from across the county, including Pacifica, to submit artwork that answers the question, "What does home mean to me?" And so, Melanie here has a quote that if you would like to read, or we can read it together, do you want to read it together? Thank you, Melanie. So, "My home means love from my family. It makes me feel safe." And... And also, this is her artwork right here. I think there's a Snoopy in the house there as well. So, it's beautiful. And in addition to that, I just wanted to say a little bit about what we do here in Pacifica. So, here in San Antonio County, over 28,000 people have left the county because they cannot afford to live here anymore. And Hip Housing is working to help seniors and workers and low-income families stay in the community. In fact, over about 41 people have been matched through our Home Sharing Program, which is a program where we match people who are looking for a room to rent with people who have an extra room in their home, they want to rent out. And so, that's 41 people who stay here and stay a part of the community. And so, my, my ask is simply, well firstly, I want to thank you again for your continued support of Hip Housing and what we do. And just to tell the audience, to tell you that you're welcome to visit our website, hiphousing.org, to learn more information about our programs. Thank you so much.
David, Whitney? Are there, oh, sorry, he's right there.
Good evening. I watched your last council meeting on the TV, and I'm a Fairmont resident, and I heard some disparaging comments about our association enforcing their covenants and putting fines on people that don't comply with them. And I was really disturbed about this because our association really tries to keep everything from going to a dump. And our president is an attorney, and I've been to the meetings, and you wouldn't believe the proposals that these people come up with that need to be toned down, that he puts them right on the line. In fact, if they lie to him, he has inside a statement that they're agreeing to something. So, you know, I look down, and I'm glad I'm in a plan development, because I see Pacifica turning into a dump. And you've got all these proposals for months that go nowhere, and up there in Fairmont, we take care of it pretty quick. If somebody decides to have a chicken coop in their backyard, man, I mean, that association gets right on it. And as far as the RV or the accessory dwelling units, they have them up there anyway, legal and illegal. And the association just doesn't want to have it go from a single family to triplexes like the state wants. So, that's about all I have to say, is a good word for the association, a plan development. And I think Pacifica could use a little more plan development. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiger?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jazz, Charles Big Stick of Pacifica. Big room. The last time I was in this room was for the Pacificans Care yearly fundraiser, so that's the association I have in this room. And I hope the spirit of Pacificans caring is fully evoked in every sense of these words. I was asked by, I think, a couple of you how the idea I raised last time I was speaking about a strike vote my company will be having shortly is going. And the answer to that is, we were going to be doing a live vote, and the International Union decided it would be in our best interest to do a mail vote, which takes a little bit longer. So, December 13th is when the votes will be counted for that. It was recently brought to my attention that one of the members of our union, one of my coworkers, is somebody whom does not, by Pacifica's legal standards, have a residence, does not have, by the Resource Center's standards, what they would call a habitable situation. He's living apparently paying rent, I believe $800 a month, to sleep on the floor of a store of a merchant who is kind enough to lend him that space. And this is one of my coworkers for many years. He's somebody who's fairly known in the community. He's somebody who has, because of a procedure done to him in his early days, not the ability most likely to rise above his particular courtesy clerk position in our store. And so, hard work, in some instances, is not quite enough to be able to figure out how to bring in an income so that you can have a habitable residence. And we're hoping that, you know, the strike vote goes through to strike, and hopefully the company decides to settle it before we have to walk out. But this is the state of affairs right now in the Bay Area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more card for oral communications. Bridget Duffy?
Hi, Bridget Duffy. Excuse me, I look affrighted, as usual. Anyway, what I really want to announce is that Flori's Bookstore has a writer's open mic happening on the second Saturdays of every month. And I called it Second Saturdays, D-A-Z-E. You don't get that, but I'm sure that some people do. Because the only legal marijuana in the county is right next door to Flori's Bookstore. And I'm not suggesting that you smoke marijuana, but I'm just saying. Second Saturdays. You can go to the beach cleanup at nine, and that goes to 11. Flori's Bookstore's open mic is from four to, two to four. Bridgetta the Bridge is hosting it. And the best part, four to six, Oceana Market, has a wine tasting that is excellent, and everybody should try. We have our very own Pacifican winemaker that runs it, and he is so informative, you know, so, and it's wine, right? And the cheese lady, you know the cheese lady at Oceana? She's amazing. She puts cheeses out in crafters. So, I suggest everybody come, if you can. And I wrote a flyer about it, and I'm going to hand it into the city. And, you know, in short, I'm going to speak on the next issue, which, you know, may offend some people, but, but the truth is, is this back-and-forth tug-of-war is literally killing us now. It's killing our country, our democracy, and our environment. And I'm really, really hoping that it doesn't have to go that way. You know, that we can find some unity, that purple becomes the color, not red or blue, purple, right? And may purple reign, right? Reign, as in power to the people. Purple reign.
Thank you, Bridget. And there are no other yellow cards for oral communications, so we're going to bring it to council for council communications.
With the Thanksgiving holiday, we had not so many meetings to attend. I did attend the Beautification Advisory Committee, and there was a report about our Tree City Initiative, which is very exciting development and some positive comments, as we discussed at the last council meeting, about the attendance and the involvement in that initiative on November 9th, I think it was, in Valmar. So that was great. And then on Friday, I attended the San Mateo Labor Council Annual Luncheon, which is a great networking opportunity. Most other cities are represented, and we also had our state legislators there from our region, so that was useful and beneficial.
Well, I just need to look at the calendar here.
Okay, Deirdre.
It was a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday without very many meetings, and I appreciated the time with my family, but I also appreciated the time with the community because I attended the tree lighting this past weekend, which was moved inside because of the rain, and I want to give hats off to Parks, Beach and Recreation and city staff for making that switcheroo very quickly. And a couple other council members were there too, and we had a jolly old time. I also brought my children to the gingerbread housemaking the next morning, and they ended up being more like gingerbread shacks or trains or just candy. But that was awesome. The kids enjoyed it, and I really appreciate PBNR putting that on and making sure Santa's here, and that was also a jolly old time. And I just want to invite everyone to the Sharp Park Monthly Cleanup this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at the corners of Beach Boulevard and Clarendon.
I'll go ahead. I do want to thank Park Beach and Recreation, too. It was really, really good to be here on Friday night, so thanks, Director Perez, you're always appreciated. Thanksgiving holiday was beautiful. I want to thank the Pacifica Resource Center for helping out all the families that you have and continue to help. I attended the Rockaway Beach event this weekend, giant event, so many people there. It was very successful, so great job. And then myself and two of my youth council members from the Pacifica Prevention Partnership answered the telephones for the Pacific Coast Television Telethon, and that was so much fun. You know, I think they've been doing it ever since, like, I can remember. So it's definitely a staple in our community, and I appreciate it a lot.
Okay, let's see. First off, I attended a meeting that Kevin Mullen had for all the city council people who were invited down in Belmont, and he just basically discussed the legislative agenda and to hear from the council members kind of with boots on the ground. And he—and it went for about two hours, and it was informative of what has happened and what he sees happening in the future. I also had the pleasure of going and attending—council member Beckmeyer was there also—where Fogfest handed out the checks from the profits of Fogfest. And each of the nonprofits—it's 47 nonprofits—got a check for $2,200. And that is entirely for volunteers, and it brings their total, since Fogfest has been in business, over $1 million. I forget the exact figure, but like, was it $1 million and a half? And a lot of that has to do with Peter Loeb, when he was in charge of it, thank you and continuing in it. And Larry Passmore, the current chair, has been there about seven, eight years, I think. So they did an excellent job. They had 47 nonprofits get $2,200. So when you go there, that's what you're doing. I was also—as most people know, I'm on the airport roundtable, and I was able to be appointed to the Airport Noise Monitor Subcommittee, which means—I haven't quite seen the job description yet, but I believe I will be on one of the committee that's going to decide where noise monitors go for the air—for the jets flying over Pacifica. And since they've changed the routes, the airplane flight patterns, it doesn't seem to make sense to have them in the same place when the planes are here and the monitors over here. So we're going to see what we can do. The FAA thinks that's a great idea, though. Not me on the committee, but where the monitors are. I also attended the Rockaway Tree Lighting Ceremony, was put on by the Chamber of Commerce, was very, very well attended. They had food trucks, they had—the library was there, and many of the merchants opened their doors to provide arts and crafts for the kids and whatever. And I think there must have easily been a couple thousand people there. Last year, I think they averaged about 3,000, so that was that.
I went to pretty much what everybody else went to. I went to the council coffee with Assemblyman Mullen, and that's all the council members from the county. So it's always a good thing to get us together and see what issues we have in common with each other, because we obviously have a lot of issues in common. I went to the Labor Luncheon, and that's also Assemblyman Hill and various other people, The tree lighting here—the highlight of the tree lighting here, of course, was the third graders singing Christmas songs, which is always really moving. And the two little girls who got up and danced in front of everybody, that was really so—it makes my hair stand up, it was so cute. And of course, the Rockaway Tree Lighting, because that's our event that we've been doing for six years, and it gets larger and larger, and we're trying to expand so that it's not quite so crowded. It was still crowded this year. Next year, it won't be quite so crowded. We're going to make it larger. So thank you all for working on all those things and attending. So thank you. Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor Viterlas, and Mayor Protem Martin, and council members Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I have two brief announcements that I'd like to make. We're continuing our efforts to get the word out about the city's holiday closure. This year, the administrative offices will be closing the week of Christmas and up to New Year's, and then reopening on the second. But all essential services and emergency services and contractual services, the community center, et cetera, will remain, as is the normal practice during the holiday. So we have press releases out, we have postings on all of the city facilities regarding that and pushing that information out on social media so that everyone is aware of the holiday closure. The second is a bit of good news that I'd like to share, and bear with me, I'm just going to read a paragraph here. It's a little bit detailed, but it's related to the city's—Pacifica's National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. And due to the diligent activities by Public Works, the city just recently found out that we'll be able to maintain the 15% premium reductions on flood insurance for residents in the city of Pacifica. So the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System is a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages community floodplain management activities that exceed the minimum flood insurance program requirements. So flood insurance premium rates are discounted to reflect that reduced flood risk. And the city participated in 2013 and achieved this rating, class seven rating, which achieved the 15% premium reduction. The ratings are good for five years, so in 2018, the Public Works Department engaged in a number of very arduous and involved tasks related to flood information and outreach, flood protection, and stormwater management. And just at the beginning of December, the Flood Insurance Program verified that we did achieve the rating, again, class seven rating, for the next five years. So bringing that benefit to flood insurance premiums for Pacifica residents. So I thought I'd share that. That completes my comments.
Thank you. We're moving on to the public hearing. This is an introduction of an ordinance amending Articles 11 and 12 of Chapter 7, Traffic within Title IV of the Pacifica Municipal Code relating to oversized vehicle parking and Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force Presentation.
Great. Thank you again, Mayor Viterlas, and Mayor Protem Martin, and city council members Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'm going to kick this item off with a couple introductory comments and talk about the flow of information this evening as well. After my introductory comments, the first part of the recommendation is to hear a presentation from the Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force. So we'll hear that presentation first. City Council asks questions of the task force members, and then we'll move into the staff presentation related to the safety issues regarding parking of oversized vehicles. As the city council well knows, and the public, during goal-setting of last year, the idea of a community task force being formed to really work on this very complex issue—it's complex from every angle. It's not just a Pacifica issue, it's an issue in the entire region, if not the entire state, as well as the country. So it's a very complex issue. The idea was that a community-based, independent-from-the-city task force with a very diverse membership should come together to really research and define the issues and come up with solutions. They were appointed, began their meetings in August, and have been meeting weekly since—just about weekly since then—for about this four-to-five-month period. And I personally want to thank the 11 members of that task force for the work, the voluntary work that they're doing to really work on this complex issue. At the same time, the issues have evolved, the motorhomes in town have proliferated in number, it's a challenging environment, so a lot has changed in that four months, and that brings us here to this point tonight where the task force has accomplished the task of coming up with a preliminary report, preliminary draft report. So we hear a presentation about that, and then we'll move into the topic of the proposed ordinance. And so with—without further ado, I think I'll bring the task force members up to the podium to begin their presentation.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, my name is Jonathan Markham, and I have the privilege of being one of those 11 members who have been meeting for some time now on the subject of unhoused in Pacifica. We are a very diverse group. I'm going to ask them all to put their hands up so that you can see that they've all—we've all come here together to present to you what, yes, is a preliminary report. It is a preliminary report, and but—and we're only going to give you—I'm only going to present to you just the highlights, because you already have the report, and I hope that you have been able to read it. The full report is available to the public on our blog and in various other places. We discussed at length, when we started our meetings, whether we would open our meetings to the public. We decided not to do so for a very simple and practical reason, as the city manager has already reminded us. This is an extraordinarily complicated issue, and we knew we had very little time to begin to address something so complicated. So we decided that we would meet in private, and we would share the notes of our meetings on our blog as soon as we had finished those meetings, and that's what we did. We did have one public forum on November 20th, and the content of that forum has influenced our report greatly. We want to make a couple of things clear as we begin this. The task force is well aware that there is need to make some changes in the city's parking ordinances. We do not disagree with that in any way whatsoever. We, along with everybody else, want to take steps to prevent Pacifica becoming a destination for the homeless from all over the region and beyond. We are also as concerned as the rest of our community to take steps to ensure the health and safety of our citizens. However, our concerns are for a very specific group of people. For the majority of us composing this report, and probably the majority of the people listening to us, we read from the perspective of being housed in a single-family home or apartment or condominium, never having experienced homelessness in any form. But the group to which we have addressed ourselves is a group of human beings that have lived much, if not all, of their lives in our community. In many cases, their jobs are here, their families and their friends are here. They are, in a very real sense, our neighbors. In addition, as part of our community, in many cases, they have been paying taxes here for all of the years that they have lived here. These people find themselves, often through no fault of their own, unable to afford—find or afford conventional housing. In order to protect their livelihood, they have temporarily resorted to living in motorhomes. They are people who have been unable to find any alternative at this present time, but this does not reflect a desire to remain vehiculately housed for an extended period of time. These people, who we feel have every right to call themselves our neighbors, as such, they are entitled to feel that we should seek to find ways to protect them, along with all the other members of our community. So who are these people? Well, a recent survey of unhoused people reveals these things about Pacifica's unhoused. There were 22 households surveyed. 41% of those people were residents of Pacifica before becoming homeless. I hope that you can see that, as we look at who these people are, they reflect the group that we believe we should reach out to help. 48% of them lost their homes here in Pacifica because of the housing crisis. 57% of them consider the motorhome temporary while they are seeking housing. They have no desire to stay in their motorhomes, they want to be housed. 76% of them are actually currently employed. As I said, we held a forum on November 20th. That forum was—91% of the people who attended that forum actually came from Pacifica, and they significantly affected the content of our report. I'm going to hand over now to Suzanne Holmes, who's going to share with you some of those concerns and some of the research that we have done into possible solutions.
It's Suzanne Moore. I'm one of the members of the task force. Can everybody hear me? I know this thing's kind of wacky. So I have the pleasure this evening of talking about community concerns and solutions. And the data that was collected on this part was collected from emails to the task force, information during the forum, which included a questionnaire, as well as work that was done by groups at tables. And so you can see from this particular graph that one of the most important issues to the public is that of the illegal waste dumping. Now, we decided that we were going to marry all our sources of information, and we came up with four basic categories of concerns that the public expressed. They are listed here, and I'm going to address them one by one. The first, as we mentioned, was trash, illegal waste, environmental and public health concerns. And so people in Pacifica want to have this one addressed as quickly as possible, and that's why folks are encouraged to hear that the Resource Center is in the process of seeking funding and contacting a service provider for a mobile waste service. This is a solution that could be accomplished in short term and addresses those community concerns of illegal dumping. The service would occur maybe once a week or once every other week, and it would be scheduled for two to three times monthly, and the task force is going to be giving a recommendation about that at the end of our report. The community is also interested in a permanent waste site. This would be a long-term solution, and if it were open to the general public, fees could pay toward the cost of construction and the maintenance on it. One site for consideration is the Lindemar Sanitary Pump Station, which is adjacent to the sanitary wet well. The advantages of this particular site is that there would be minimal excavation required, but there are challenges. This is— This is a site that the community is concerned about. And obviously, we would need to be reassured if this were a site that was chosen, and it would require coastal commission permit. In the short term, we can continue other sites that seem to be appropriate. A third concern, of course, is trash, which is city-wide, and Recology of the Coast will continue to monitor and advise the city on this. The second current concern that's listed up there in our categories is safety. And there's two issues around safety. One is an issue around line of sight, that oversized vehicles can sometimes block the line of sight for other motorists, pedestrians, or bicyclists. And the task force agrees that safety is important. And we are going to make recommendations on a reasonable approach to this, but we realize that parking restrictions that severely limit motor home parking could obstruct the homeless from participating in programs that will be pathways to permanent housing. The second concern around safety is around who is in our mobile homes. And Jonathan kind of described some of those folks that are out there. But a lot of the programs that are used for safe parking use vetting and patient contracts to help create the program a little bit more effectively. And so the programs would be getting to know those people who want to participate, what their goals are, what their backgrounds are, and using that process to draw up contracts with them. We understand the Resource Center already has a process in place. And literature that we've reviewed, as well as remarks from folks that we have interviewed from Santa Barbara, East Palo Alto, Redwood City, and Mountain View, all of them say and acknowledge that vetting and contracts increase safety for both the homeless and the community at large. The third category of concern that's listed is locations of programs. And so I'm going to give just a general overview of what we've learned so far on models. Each community is unique, and for that reason, many models exist out there. There may be communities who are utilizing lots that are owned by the city, or faith-based organizations who are providing a lot, schools who have used pilot studies, lots used that are public, private, or shared among communities. There are models that are centralized, in other words, a lot that may house several homeless, or decentralized, like a program that is in Santa Barbara and Goleta, where they may be having multiple lots, but just a few in number of slots that are available that evening. Some potential sites require inter-agency and inter-community cooperation. And so sites that might be possible here in Pacifica might include Muscle Rock, which is owned by Daly City, and therefore coordination with that community to see if they can be assisted as well. Caltrans lots are here in Pacifica. There are sites owned by the county, or sites that are in unincorporated San Mateo County that might be possibilities. And some sites would require review or permits by the coastal commission. But I want to review some models that might be specifically promising here in Pacifica. The first is a rotational shelter, and this model was first introduced here in Pacifica with a feasibility study in 2016. It uses private lots of volunteer hosts. The hosts would provide an overnight indoor space that would accommodate cots, a bathroom facility, a hot evening meal, and outdoor parking for those who are vehiculally housed. The service provider would supply cots, overnight staffing, liability insurance for the host, and participants would be vetted. Other homeless services would be available that include case management, which is that important pathway to housing. The strengths of this particular model are it's less expensive than a brick-and-mortar style, it engages community partners, it provides overnight shelter, train staff, services, including off-site showers and laundry, and case management toward that housing restabilization. The challenges are that motor homes need to be relocated every morning, which is stressful, especially in an environment of limited parking. And sustainability of this model is really dependent upon volunteer hosts, that makes it a little fragile. Some longer-term model allows for a longer stay, maybe up to 30 days. And the strengths of this program is it would provide all the services that we already listed, plus security at the site, and a longer period of respite. Therefore, it's less stressful to participants. The challenges of the model, it would be maintaining services around the clock. A third possibility is permit processing. So many communities who start these programs start out small, and there may be several participants who are interested in it. If the permit process and vetting occurs in advance, then as slots become available, people can move into them. The advantage to that is that people get vetted early, which has increased safety to everyone, and clients are integrated into homeless programs early, therefore providing that pathway to rehousing. The challenges to this model would be that there would be a modification of municipal codes necessary, allowing for motor home habitation for permitted participants. And on-street parking, of course, could be challenging. The last model is a decentralized neighborhood suggestion. And this model was suggested by Tiger Big Stick, and it would allow private property owners to host a motor home for a week on a rotational basis. The strengths of this model are that it engages the community, and it would allow a longer respite than an overnight model. It would also utilize existing homeless services in the community. The challenges is that this is a new idea, and it is somewhat complex. It would not only require vetting of participants, but vetting of homeowners, as well as surveying the neighbors so that they would be accepting of a population that might be coming into their neighborhood. We would want to make sure that a vulnerable population was accepted. Also, there is no real plan for security of this site. It might be challenging since it would be based on just a decentralized model. Power services, cost to the host would need to be calculated. But lastly, the model creates a relationship of inequity. It is a relationship where, for many businesses, managers cannot date other staff because of a power inequity. There would be a model here which would have an inequity between a homeowner and a homeless family or person. And although that might not lead to problems, it would certainly need to be closely monitored so that would not be abuse. I'm going to go back to one of the last focuses of community concerns, and that was sustainability and use of resources. Our report is pretty thorough about the resources that are county, state, and private, and I'm not going to go over that information, but refer you to the report. But what people in our community wanted to know is, what can the city do? So the city could lease a lot for a pilot study. The strengths of this are that the liability would shift from the city to the program, and the program costs would be lessened by a reasonable lease, and it would be a relatively inexpensive way for the city to lend support to a program. The challenges are that the funds normally accrued by the city for that lot would be lost. A second thing that the city could do is a budget line item for the homeless. This is further elaborated under our recommendations, but it would make our city a little bit more agile to be able to compete for grants for the homeless. Lastly, sustainability. To address a critical housing issue, sustainability is fragile if it's dependent upon volunteers alone. And all of the programs that we have reviewed say that community will, and demonstrated support by the city council is necessary to qualify for funding and service contractors. We have identified solutions that are very real. They have been demonstrated to work, and the public concerns are genuine, and there are real ways to help our homeless and stable housing. So this graph was from the questionnaire, and it shows that people in our community have ideas and they want solutions. So I just want to now let Jonathan take over on recommendations from the task force.
I want to briefly cover some of the recommendations. I won't cover all of them, but I want to list them for you for the things that we are recommending at this time. First of all, to address environmental issues, we support a temporary site for mobile waste disposal, possibly at 2212 Beach Boulevard. This will be, this is an almost immediate solution to what clearly is a problem that the public desires to solve. We support the examination of a feasibility study for a passive facility at the Lindemar Sanitary Pump Station. And as we have noted, there are some concerns about that site from the public, so we would continue to look for other possible sites. We recommend the use of the established vetting process currently used by PRC. This ensures that the people who get involved in the programs provided are people who really want help, who want to get into housing, and it is already proven that safe parking is a process which leads to real housing. So we support the use of that vetting process for all of the programs. We support the, as a qualification of programs, participation in case management, which our PRC is already extraordinarily experienced in doing. We believe, once again, this demonstrates that they are looking to find help and to get into permanent housing. We support the fact that any parking ordinance, while accepting that we need to have them, should have a provision for emergency parking for qualified RVs and motor homes. This will prevent these people who we have identified as our neighbors from being cut off, not just from what they've already lost, but from the services that help them to get the help they need. We support the continued study of the municipal code. Because recognizing that provisions may well not be sufficient, a vetting process and a permitting process will be needed in order that people waiting to be able to get into permanent facilities, into the safe parking facilities, have somewhere to park in specified street locations. And we support a pilot study for the use of private homes. We urge the creation of a line item for homeless services in the city budget for 2020. Those are our recommendations, and they're based on the fact that we believe that we have demonstrated that many housed in RV and motor homes are Pacificans. That safe parking is a proven route to find housing. We believe that we can, through readily available resources, reduce significantly illegal dumping and waste disposal. We believe that by adopting our recommendations and making sure that the safe parking programs are in place before much-needed changes in the municipal code are enacted, we can protect those in our community who are facing the most challenging times of their lives, those who want help and are actively seeking to find it. We can help them lose more than they have lost already. This can be achieved at the same time as providing protection for the health and safety
And questions from council?
I have a question. I have a question. On the, there's no page numbers on here, but the task force recommendations under safety, it says, "We recommend the use of established vetting process currently in use by PRC," but it doesn't say what that is in reference to. Is that, if it were a, for illegal waste and trash dumping, vetting program, or?
No, it refers to the fact that all of the people who are participating in programs would be vetted thoroughly by the Pacifica Resource Center.
For any program.
Before they could participate in a program.
In any program?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
I also have a question. For starters, I want to thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to the task force for all of your work, all your tireless work. That just wasn't nearly appreciated as much as it should have been, so thank you, thank you. You called this a preliminary report. Does that mean that we're going to have a final report? Do you need more time to do that, and what can that look like?
Well, we recognize that originally our task force was envisaged as having five, maybe even six months' work. We've only worked for four months. Now, I have no idea whether my fellow task force members are willing to continue their work, but the fact that we actually named our report preliminary, I think would indicate that we may well be willing to continue to finalize some of the things we've been, I think we want to finalize some of those things. I'm not being, and I had anything thrown at me right now by the, my colleagues.
That's good. They better not.
That's probably saying.
If we were to continue the Pacifica Task, unhoused in Pacifica task force, is there any time estimate as to how long you think it would take to come to some sort of resolution? Or would you want to just have a meeting, discuss that among yourselves, and get back to us in January?
I think we would want to talk amongst ourselves.
Okay.
Because every, each member of the task force has been working on different things, and therefore, we need to, we need to be sure that we are able to share with one another how much progress we know, we've made on our particular assignments, and how long it might take to bring them to a conclusion.
Okay. Are you looking for council to express?
No.
Anything? No, I thought someone was going to be my next question, because you said questions. That was my question, is to how much are you looking for tonight?
Yeah. What I would offer is clarifying questions from the presentation. You know, council can ask the task force clarifying questions, what does this mean? What does that mean? But, you know, we're not prepared to discuss, the city staff's not prepared to discuss implementation. And I think in terms of the future of the task force, since they're independent from the city, it's really their decision about what they're going to continue with or not, and be a resource potentially to the city.
Then are we done with the task force? I'm kind of confused. I'm confused.
Okay. So, yeah. Okay. So, questions? Thanks for the clarification, and I apologize for not thanking you earlier. Thank you all, from the bottom of my heart. I know you've been meeting almost weekly on this for at least four months. I was definitely in the camp of, I think it was six months originally that we had given you, that that wasn't even nearly enough time. So I appreciate all the work that you have done, especially in the last few weeks to compile this together, and I think you got to a really great point. I am curious on a couple of things. Has there been any interest in, from more private or the faith community, for any sort of safe parking programs potential in Pacifica? Has there been any interest in that? Has there been any interest in that?
I can't speak for the private, but I do know that I have approached a number of members of the faith community to consider participating. I can't, I can't commit any further than that.
Okay.
But they are under consideration.
Okay. So there was no, like, hard no's from everyone?
I have not received a letter saying, "No, thank you."
Okay.
We did think that one host should be the city, and that they should consider being one of the hosts at the community center for a week. So that would also help to show the community's interest in having this, that you would be one of the hosts, and we're aiming for five.
And that would be on a rotational basis? So you would pick one week out of a month or something? Okay.
We also hope that the parking lot at the community, behind the community center here, might be one of those sites that we could, that could be considered for a pilot safe parking program.
Is that what Suzanne was just talking about? It's different?
That's different. She was talking about the rotational shelters, which might be, which, which as the rotational shelters, which might, the community center might participate in.
Okay. So the rotational shelter would be one night, it would be similar to the pilot program that PRC ran at St. Peter's last year?
Absolutely.
Okay. But the safe parking program would be on an ongoing basis? It wouldn't be a rotational thing, your suggestion, you're suggesting, or would it?
It would be on a short-term basis. RVs could park there from between 7:00 in the evening, or 10:00 in the evening, at a time, at a time that was made convenient by the site itself, and then it would be emptied again in the morning. It would be policed and would be supervised by a nonprofit organization.
Okay.
There is also a long-term model that could be considered.
A what?
A long-term model of a 30-day stay.
Okay.
So that was one of the models that was suggested, the pilot study for that longer term.
Go ahead. Mike has a follow-up to that question.
You're using two different terms. You're using safe parking and then shelter. By shelter, do you mean physically in the building, or safe parking, you know?
The shelter programs that St. Peter's experimented with last year had both. They had RVs parking in the parking lot, and they had other homeless people sleeping inside the building. That was the rotational shelter model. The safe parking model is just for RVs and motorhomes.
Okay. So you are talking about two different?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Yeah, because this is the unhoused in Pacifica task force, so we're dealing with people who are unhoused, regardless if they're vehiculally housed right now. So there are a couple of suggestions being made to alleviate some of the challenges that we're having. A safe parking program being one of them, a rotational shelter being another, a potentially rotational dump site for vehicular waste is another, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and the other thing that I heard, that I've been hearing, is that in order for any of these things to work, in particular, a safe parking program, in order for the city to get any sort of money or any sort of funding, that any or all of these programs would need support from the city, support from city council as well. So to have the city behind something gets us further in terms of funding. And I just wanted to say that out loud, because I've been hearing it, and when I attended the meeting a couple of weeks ago, the community forum that the unhoused in Pacifica task force held, it was a common theme at all the tables, and I think everyone understood that. And another thing that I heard at those tables was, yeah, okay, sorry, was, and I am asking questions, but I also want to make sure that I'm getting it right, that people understand that it is not just a city problem. That is why the community has come together to put forth these solutions. And I think that was really understood in the table. So this is a very thoughtful proposal, and thank you.
Just a clarifying question on the model program that was done at St. Peter. I think I heard you say it was last year, and on the report, it references August 2016? Is that the same thing? Or is there another, was there another updated since 16?
I'm going to ask Anita to come here, because she knows, I'm not qualified to answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's two different things. One is the feasibility study, which was August of 2016. August of 2016, that was funded by Board of Supervisor, our Board of Supervisor, Don Horsley. So that was August 2016. And then based on that August 2016 feasibility study, we tested it at St. Peter. It was actually in, I believe, 2017. We tried it again in 2018. We learned some things. And this year, we're hoping to test it again at other churches.
So in the report, it references 2016. Is there data from each of those updated?
So August 2016 report is the feasibility study.
Okay.
That was just determining what is an ideal rotational shelter. What does that look like? What are the costs associated with?
Okay. So that was not having people stay?
No.
Okay. That, I didn't.
It was a group of folks, some folks who are represented in this room, were part of that conversation that was done by, like I said, funded by the county, but conducted by Home &amp; Hope, which does a rotational shelter on the bayside. So they already do this work on a rotation with faith-based community, faith-based churches on the bayside, not on the coast. And so it was taking that model and making it work on the coast, not just on the coast, but also for singles. So the Home &amp; Hope model is for families. So they host five families of up to four people, so a total of 20 folks. And we were taking that model and using it for the coast side, for folks who are single without children.
And the Home &amp; Hope rotational shelter that's conducted on the bayside is for vehicular?
No, they are, it's a rotational shelter inside.
Oh.
Inside. The feasibility study that was done in August of 2016 was only looking at rotational shelters, because at that time, there wasn't a significant influx of the number of folks who were in vehicles. They weren't vehiculally housed as much. But we've seen a shift since 2016, which is why we've incorporated a safe parking component to the test that we were doing in town. I will also mention that the rotational shelter, the Home &amp; Hope model was just one model. The other model is actually done in Palo Alto. The city of Palo Alto hosts a rotating shelter at 11 churches over the whole year. It is for single folks, not with children. They have, so the feasibility study was a combination of what we saw at Home &amp; Hope and what we see, what we saw with the program in Palo Alto, which is called Hotel de Za or Hotel de Zink. I always forget the last part of it. But it's been going on for decades, and many of the churches don't really know how it started, but they continue it.
Thank you.
Can I just ask Anita one before you step down? They had mentioned about the mobile dump site, or the mobile dump station, and I think the reports said that you were looking for funding, but can you clarify that, please?
So we do actually have funding for, to test a mobile dump site. This is part of a contract that we received from the County of San Mateo Center on Homelessness to provide outreach services to folks who are homeless on the coast. And as part of that work, we included funding to test a dump site as an opportunity to do outreach to folks who are unhoused and living in vehicles, specifically motorhomes. And so this was really a test for a couple of things, right? One was to address community concerns around health issues with dumping. And then the second was to bring people to us for the services that they, you know, offering them something that then allowed us to connect with them, build rapport, connect them to services, and then ultimately get them housed.
Thank you so much.
Stay there. Please, and thank you. You have a voucher program right now that you offer for gas and dumping, and I understand that no one has used that program.
No one has used it yet.
Right. Why do you think that is?
Partly because folks that we have, when we were doing the motorhome survey, we found that a lot of people just didn't want to ask for services, because they felt like there were other people who needed it more than they did. It's a common theme for folks asking for help. And so even though we offer it, people are not asking for it. I don't know what that means exactly in terms of where they are dumping, how they are dumping. I can only speak from, like, what I have heard from people, and I imagine if I was living in a motorhome, I would not be using the facilities in my motorhome. I would be using it as I was out in the community, and I would only be using it in the evenings and when I couldn't get anywhere else. And for that reason, I imagine I wouldn't have to dump very often because of that, you know? And I don't know if those are the strategies that the folks that we have in Pacifica are using, because they aren't necessarily coming in, because, one, they don't consider themselves homeless oftentimes, and, two, they don't want to take from anybody else who needs it more than they do.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Why didn't you continue with the rotating shelter at St. Peter's? It happened for one night, and then nothing else happened again on that?
Right. So the reason we tested it was to convince community members that it was possible and that it could work. PRC is not in the business of providing shelter, but what we were trying to do was gain support from the community so that we could bring a service provider in who would do it, right? My hope was that Home &amp; Hope, or Life Moves, who already does a rotational shelter, would come in. And by testing it at St. Peter, it got folks interested in providing that services, that service. And then the hope was that we would test it at other sites to get commitment from folks that they would take on a week every five weeks. So it's not that we intended to continue a rotational shelter. It was literally to test it, to work out whatever kinks we could find, and to hopefully get the support of the congregation to continue.
Okay. And as far as the vetting, would you also consider if they had a driver's license, insurance, and registration?
I think.
Because I've had a lot of complaints that a lot of the motorhomes are not registered.
So one of the things that we have done is looked at other safe parking programs, and looked at some of the requirements that they did. With any program that's new, it really comes down to what and how we structure that program. So those are all things that are open as part of the vetting process. I think that the first thing is to know that it's something that the city will support, and then we can start working out the details of who gets in and how.
Two more.
Yeah.
The pilot study, talking about using five of the vehicles. I was trying to find the exact number, but I think you said that there were approximately 88 vehicles when 22 were spoken to.
So just to be clear, the last time we did the one-day homeless count, the raw number of motorhomes specifically counted was 75. I've been doing an unofficial count, mostly on the north part of town, and that number is around, between 20 and 30 motorhomes specifically. Now, that doesn't count folks who are in vans, because when we did the survey, it was specifically people in motorhomes, based on county concerns around motorhomes, because Pacifica is just one area. This is something that's happening across the county, and the county wanted to know and learn more information so that we can hopefully structure programs or funding, right? Because the county doesn't provide those services. They fund programs to provide services, and the more the county knows about what are the needs of that community, the more they can create programs in response. So we specifically only surveyed folks in motorhomes, because that's what we were asked to do. Now, with the contract that we just recently received, that's for anybody who's unhoused in Pacifica, including folks who are in encampments, who are sleeping on the streets, who are sleeping in cars, who are sleeping in vans. And the work that we did around motorhomes was a great entry point for us to be able to continue that work with the other folks who are in town. So really, of the 22 that were surveyed, not all of those are the same ones that we surveyed, right? Because some folks, they're on wheels, they leave. New folks might have come in too, but on average, there were and have been, you know, between, actually, I think I did the numbers, it was 25 on average of just motorhomes. And I know that doesn't count the south part of town, but it at least gives us a sense, right? So between January and now, went from 75 to around 30.
So if you have a pilot study with five, what about the rest of the people?
So that's not my recommendation, so I'm going to turn it over to the.
So a lot of the programs recommended, starting slow on the pilot study, but using the permit system to go ahead and vet and get people right onto the pathway of services that might be available for the homeless. So the permit system would be an adjunct as the study, pilot study initially starts.
Okay. And one more thing. In this program for East Palo Alto, they, it's approximate annual cost of $3,000, or $360,000 for 20, and that comes out to $1,500 a month per vehicle. Is there a possibility that with $1,500 per month per vehicle, that they could go into some type of RV park?
Thank you for that question. I do remember this question being asked in February, and somebody from Catholic Charities said that that amount also includes many other homeless services, including case management. And that's why that price is what it is. So I think that it would be nice to be able to offer people other housing options, and that's going to be a process of case management on a one-to-one basis. And I know that the case managers are already attempting to do that for folks.
I know you basically just looked at Berkeley, and I guess East Palo Alto is the two permitting programs? Or did you look at any others?
We actually didn't check into Berkeley. We were looking at the long-term site that was in Oakland, and then the overnight studies that are existing now in San Jose and in East Palo Alto.
Okay. You're right. I do remember those now.
No problem.
Now, I have read some stuff about Palo Alto, not East Palo Alto, but Palo Alto's program, and that seems to be pretty robust and pretty successful. And do you have any ideas to what the cost of that one is at all, or?
I do not.
Okay.
And I think that that's a rotational model for families. I can't quite remember, Anita, but that's what I had thought. It was a slightly different.
It's a safe parking model, I think.
In Palo Alto?
Yeah.
I can't address that, then.
If there are no other questions, we're going to move on to the staff report.
Thank you.
And thank you all for your.
Thank you for all the work here. I just wanted to kind of ask a question now, is what do we do with the unhoused task force report?
There's nothing else.
We just receive it?
Yes, you just received it, there's no action. It was just a report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dan Stider, Chief of Police. Tonight's staff will be presenting the proposed ordinance and the methodology behind the creation of the proposed oversized vehicle ordinance. So as you recall, on November 12th, 2019, city council directed staff to return tonight, December 9th, 2019, in ordinance addressing health and safety concerns related to oversized vehicle parking in Pacifica. We're going to begin the report this evening with an engineering analysis that led to the development of the conditions of the ordinance, and I will turn the microphone over to engineering staff. and I will turn the microphone over to engineering staff at this time.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Is this working? Good evening, Honorable and City Councilmembers. My name is Ryan Marquez. I'm Associate Civil Engineer with the Engineering Division. So engineering was asked to look at traffic safety conditions posed by oversized vehicles parking on city roads. And we, from our analysis, we concluded that there was five criteria that could pose traffic safety issues. These five are listed here. They are constrained width, constrained curves, line-of-sight constraints, and bicycle lane and bus interactions. I'll go through each of these criteria throughout my presentation to hopefully better elaborate on what each of them means. So I'm going to show you a series. First, we'll go through some general concepts that we used in this analysis. Just for clarity's sake, I wanted to define what a travel lane is, a parking lane is, and a Class 2 bicycle lane. So a travel lane is a lane that automobile travels in. These are generally 10 to 12 feet wide. A parking lane is a lane that automobile parks in, and these are generally eight feet wide. A Class 2 bicycle lane is a four- to five-foot-wide designated bicycle lane. Here is a photo of Palmetto Avenue with each of these pointed out. So the overall goal of our analysis was to ensure that travel lanes do not fall below 10 feet wide and that bicycle lanes are not parked on. So here is a cross-section depicting a oversized vehicle parking on the road. And as you can see from here in red, you have a standard parking width of eight feet. And with the oversized vehicle, it could take up to 10 feet in width, and that creates a two-foot overhang into the travel lane. So to accommodate for this 10-foot travel lane, or, sorry, to accommodate for this 10-foot parking lane, engineering determined that there needed to be a minimum 12-foot travel lane and that there needed to be a minimum of 40 feet overall width in the road to provide two 10-foot travel lanes and two 10-foot parking lanes. We also found that if there was bicycle facilities or bicycle lanes on that road, that it needed to be wider than 40 feet in that case. So I'm going to show you a series of diagrams to mainly go over our first criteria, which is the constrained width criteria. So here's a typical road. You've got two eight-foot parking lanes on both sides and two 10- to 12-foot travel lanes. Now, when you introduced an oversized vehicle here, you can see from the depiction that the travel lane is constricted from 10 feet to possibly eight feet. And the issue here is that you have automobiles trying to go around these oversized vehicles, crossing onto oncoming traffic. So here's another example of an oversized vehicle parking in which the operation is safe. Because the oversized vehicle takes up to 10 feet in width, if there is a 12-foot travel lane, then that two-foot possible overhang will be accommodated by the 12-foot travel lane, and you'll still have a 10-foot travel lane there for cars to safely travel along. So here's a typical road with oversized vehicle with a bus passing the oversized vehicle. As you can see here, the travel lane is constrained again, and the bus has to go onto oncoming traffic in order to navigate around the oversized vehicle. The next diagram we have here is a typical road with oversized vehicle and with a bus passing that is considered safe. So we have a 40-foot wide road here with 12-foot travel lanes and eight-foot parking lane, and this 12-foot travel lane allows for that two-foot overhang to still accommodate a 10-foot travel lane in which a bus can safely pass an oversized vehicle. The next diagram here is a road with a bicycle lane. As you can see here, you've got two travel lanes, the 10- to 12-feet, a five-foot bicycle lane, and two eight-foot parking lanes. Now, when you introduce the oversized vehicle in here, the oversized vehicle hangs into the bicycle lane, which could change the path of travel for bicyclists, putting them onto a travel lane, which could also change the path of travel for cars and could increase the possibility of accidents in this case. So from there, we basically determined that we needed a 40-foot wide road to accommodate for oversized parking taking up 10 feet of parking width. So we went to our city streets database, and we looked at the 589 sections of road we have in the city, and we identified that 528 sections are roads of under 40 feet. And those can be, a list of those roads can be found in Attachment 1, Table 1. So the parking of oversized vehicles on these identified road segments is proposed to be restricted in the ordinance being considered tonight. From there, staff analyzed the remaining 61 sections of road, and we found that 32 of those 61 segments had these possible issues identified in them. And the list of these roads can be found in Table 2, Attachment 1. So we found that just because these roads were 40 feet in width, it did not necessarily mean that they could provide safe and adequate parking width for oversized vehicles. Some of these conditions that we found were that the road has over two travel lanes with a travel lane of under 12 feet. For example, Lindemar, which has two travel lanes in each direction and has parking on both sides, but does not necessarily have travel lane widths to accommodate for the extra two-foot overhang. We found that the road may have diagonal parking that makes it not suitable for oversized parking. An example of this is Manor. We found that the road may already not have parking available on it, like Sharp Park. These roads showed up in our database because we do not have a criteria for parking or not parking to filter before. We also found that the road may be unimproved, a dirt road that's unimproved, like Winona. Or we found that the road has a very short length, which likely makes it a sight-distance issue as is. And an example of that was Madrid Court, which is about 100-foot court. So what we were left with at the end of this analysis was 29 segments of road that may be suitable for oversized vehicles, but this is pending further analysis done. So this was just the first part of our analysis that we did. So here are some of the other criteria that we were looking at, but we have not yet analyzed. So the second criteria in this ordinance was constrained curves criteria. So as you can see from this diagram, when you have an oversized vehicle parking on a curve, there can be a possible further offset from the curb and into the travel lane in multiple areas here. And this would constrain the travel lane and cause traffic to go possibly across the center line and possibly increase the possible collisions in the area. Another issue we found was stopping sight distance. Oversized vehicles parking near intersections could cause blind spots for merging drivers. Our fourth criteria that we looked at was bicycle lanes interactions that are outside of the analysis that we already did. So basically, what this means is, our analysis looked at some of the roads that have bicycle lanes on them, and we determined already that they do not have the width to accommodate for oversized. However, there were some roads in our analysis that we found that there may be space on them and that may be suitable for oversized parking. But this criteria needs to be in here because roads vary in width, and they can vary from block to block. So just because at one portion of the road, you can park an oversized vehicle, there may be something maybe 100 feet down the road that's not as suitable. Additionally, this is in here because there may be future installation of bicycle lanes that may take up the extra width on the road, which could cause a width constraint. So the final criteria we looked at were bus routes. At this time, it's really unclear if a 10-foot travel lane would accommodate Samtrans bus routes. We need to look further into this. From our understanding, Samtrans buses are nine-and-a-half feet wide, and we need to get into contact with Samtrans to discuss if the 10-foot is adequate for their bus drivers to navigate the streets. So as a summary, our initial analysis concluded that 560 of the 589 sections of road would be unsuitable based off the width constraint, which is criteria 1. Further restrictions on oversized vehicle parking, if not, if the following issues were to occur, or, sorry, further restrictions on oversized vehicle parkings could happen if the following issues did occur. And these are criteria 2 through 5 that I just went over, in which 2 is when parking on curves caused less than 10-foot travel lanes to occur. Number 3, when parking on bicycle lanes repeatedly or future bicycle lanes create width constraint. 4, when parking too close to the intersection causes inadequate sight-distance maneuver. Or 5, parking along bus routes forces buses to make unsafe maneuvers.
Okay. I will continue with the content of the proposed ordinance. First of all, understand, please, that California Vehicle Code Section 22507 gives local jurisdictions the authority by ordinance or resolution to prohibit stopping, standing, or parking of vehicles, including but not limited to vehicles over six feet in height within 100 feet of an intersection on certain streets during all or certain hours of the day. The proposed ordinance this evening adds a definition of oversized vehicle to the Municipal Code Section 4-7.1204 and includes any of the following: a single vehicle or combination of vehicles 22 feet or more in length, seven feet or more in width, and eight feet or more in height. The proposed ordinance also amends that same Municipal Code section and replaces the terms "motor homes" and "mobile homes" with the term "oversized vehicle." It also authorizes the traffic engineer to erect signs indicating no parking of an oversized vehicle or boats on public streets in specific circumstances, including safety concerns, and it also provides for other conforming amendments. The proposed ordinance would add Pacifica Municipal Code Section 4-7.1205, which prohibits the parking of oversized vehicles on streets with width constraints as identified in Tables 1 and 2. Also, on those streets that are not in Tables 1 and 2 but meet certain criteria as set forth in the ordinance. Also, there are certain exemptions, which include a two-hour exemption for actively loading or unloading an oversized vehicle adjacent to a residence or a business. Examples of that might be a moving van or a motor home being loaded or unloaded near a residence, or perhaps a commercial vehicle loading, unloading goods or wares at a business in a commercial zone. It would also exempt construction vehicles with a valid City of Pacifica encroachment permit and commercial vehicles in identified loading zones. So the proposed ordinance also amends Municipal Code Section 4-7.1106. It makes a conforming change to authorize the traffic engineer to erect no parking signs where the travel lane width of the street is less than 10 feet. And of note, court cases have upheld a city's authority to regulate parking of any type of vehicle under Section 22507 of the California Vehicle Code. Now, the proposed ordinance this evening considers only traffic safety issues related to the dimensions of oversized vehicles. Other sections of the Municipal Code already prohibit dumping waste in an unsanitary manner, as well as the discharge of waste into the city's store-and-drain system. So in the previous staff report and at the November 12th, 2019 council meeting, council had requested information regarding a permitting program for motor home residents that was currently being considered by the City of Berkeley. And as I spoke of that evening, Berkeley has adopted a 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM prohibition of oversized vehicle parking that will not be enforced until a permitting program is in place. They currently do not have it in place. On September 25th, 2019, the Berkeley City Council directed their city manager to research a permit parking program. So the fiscal impact of this ordinance, if the proposed ordinance were adopted, public works and engineering believe that a minimum of approximately 200 signs would be needed to post these areas at an estimated cost of up to $200 for labor and material for each sign, which comes to approximately $40,000 minimum cost, with a likelihood there might be new poles adding additional incidental expenses. So this evening, the city manager recommends the city council move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the city council amending Articles 11 and 12 of Chapter 7 Traffic within Title 4 of the Pacifica Municipal Code relating to oversized vehicle parking and finding the ordinance exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. So next step, if the council introduces the proposed ordinance, a second reading would occur in January of 2020. Staff will review streets, in the meantime, that meet the criteria in Section 4-7.1205, and prepare a resolution naming those streets, meeting the criteria, and bring back for council approval. The alternatives this evening is the city council may wish to consider the following alternatives. Council may choose not to introduce the ordinance at this time. They may choose to discuss and amend the ordinance, introduce the ordinance, but amend the ordinance to specify a later effective date, then 30 days after the adoption, or delay implementation of the ordinance, or refer the ordinance back to staff for further study.
Okay. And questions from council?
Chief, this is kind of an odd question, but you have this list of all the streets in Pacifica in the report. What do the numbers mean on there? Like this Paloma Avenue says 24, 25. Paloo says 45, 55. What does that mean?
So I can answer this question. So the database we used was just from our pavement management system, and they're just section numbers.
Okay, so we don't need to pay attention to those. Okay.
On, at the beginning of your presentation about the widths, and you referred to the parking with, when there's a street that has a bike lane. On the first slide that has this picture, it refers to Class 2 bicycle lanes. Can you, for my edification and all of the public, explain what is a Class 2? What does it look like compared to not a Class 2? And what are the other, what might we see on the streets? And can you clarify for us how those relate to your presentation?
Sure. So Class 2 lanes are, as explained, they're four- to five-foot-wide designated bicycle lanes. Those are your most common bicycle lanes you see. Class 1s are considered shared-use paths, so those are generally off-street. So you'll see those, think about like the 500 block of Espinod. There's that coastal trail. That's considered a Class 1. Class 3 is just basically share the road. So there's pavement markings down on the road that just say, you know, bikes can go here, and essentially, there's a sign that says, "Share the road." Class 4 is considered a separated bike track. You see those kind of more in the city where there's these yellow kind of cone-type delineators that mark off like a separated buffered space between the travel lane and the bicycle lane. So those are your main classifications that you have, and they all take up varying spaces. But for the roads in Pacifica, you mostly see Class 2 bicycle lanes.
And with regard to the Bike and Ped Project that you recently presented, the draft, and that you've worked on, would you say most of the recommendations are Class 2? Or can you even comment on that?
I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but most of them are going to be Class 2 and Class 3, yes.
And Class 3, so share the road, does that have any designated striping or paint?
It does have designated striping and paint.
And signage?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead. Thank you so much for putting this report together in such a short time. I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that. I did notice that a lot of the ways through the report, it says pending further analysis by the traffic engineer. So I have some questions, specifically on packet page 89. It states, "It should be noted that there may exist suitable roads within this list that have wide enough parking and travel lanes, but staff has not been able to examine each street individually at this time." So my question is, can staff, if directed, examine each street individually, and how much time would staff need to do this?
So yes, the answer to your question is yes, staff can analyze those individually. I'm unsure at this...
You will be doing that in order to prepare the exhibit to the resolution?
Correction, we will be doing that in the near future. I'm not sure how much time that's going to take at this point.
Okay.
I would estimate at least 40 hours, though.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. More, hold on. Again, on packet page 90, it mentions the same thing, specific engineering analysis. So I'm really interested in more analysis being done, because I know this, this report was put together really quickly. And so I guess my question, you just answered that question, and come back to me, because I have more.
So there are about 13 pages of, what is it, an estimate of 30 streets listed on each of these 13 pages of roads that we know RVs would be restricted from under this proposed ban. Yes? But there's more, right? Okay. And your analysis is based on a 10-foot-wide RV?
So our analysis is based on the fact that there's a possibility that RVs could take up to 10 feet in parking space, yes.
Okay. But it's not based on any boots-on-the-ground analysis of how wide the average RV parking in Pacifica is right now? Is that correct?
That's correct. We needed to take the design for the worst-case scenario to ensure safety for all, essentially.
That makes sense, okay. Because I think seven foot is what the law is based on, right? Seven-foot-wide?
So in, are you talking about the proposed ordinance tonight, or the actual vehicle code?
Actual vehicle code.
So from our findings in the vehicle code, it stated that vehicles can be up to eight-and-a-half feet wide, not including mirrors and other appearances.
So some of these things I just want to say out loud for myself and for others. This ban would include a lot of work trucks, it would include boats, it would include vehicles over eight-foot-high, yes? And I just wanted, I was wondering if, I know this was purely about safety, but I'm thinking in terms of also recreation, and this being a beach town, and myself being a surfer, considering a surf van, and a sprinter, for instance, is a vehicle that I could have purchased for my surf van. I opted for the minivan, but it, at its highest height, would be about nine-and-a-half feet. I said no, because you can't get that through the airport, but under this ban, it would be restricted from just parking in front of my house for more than 72 hours, right?
That's right.
And there's a lot of surfers in this town with sprinters. And that is all I want to say for now. Thanks.
I have one more quick question. So it's been my experience that even, so it's, sometimes it's really hard to see around the corner with just a regular car, right? So would there, would there be able to be like red painted around the corners of intersections anyway, not just for oversized vehicles? Because it's not only oversized vehicles that like disturb my line of sight, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'll ask. I've been in other cities where they post at the beginning of the city, no oversized vehicles are allowed. For example, Foster City has those signs, and all they did was post at every entry to the city instead of on every street. And that would seem like, I already see the answer to that one. I guess that's not possible. And the next question is, the use of personal recreational vehicles and parking in front of people's homes for only 120 minutes. I thought what we discussed in the past was a 24-hour time period with a permit for vehicles to load and unload, because it seems more reasonable than two hours of being able to park in front of your house.
Well, while staff is coming up with an answer to that second question, let me just clarify for the rest of the council my answer on, on why we can't just post at the entryway to the cities. There are legal requirements that people who are parking on certain specified streets be aware of which streets their particular vehicles, whether they be oversized or normal size, can and cannot park. So it's a due process concern.
Because of the specific street issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
So if we want to address the, the time limit, staff, staff came up with the, with the two-hour time limit, the consideration was for safety. There were many other, many other reasons over the last couple of years that we've discussed, potential ordinance, but none has really focused on safety the way this ordinance is. And this, this ordinance is focused solely on safety, and the parameters for creating it are on safety. The staff began with the recommendation of the, of the two-hour limit with the idea that there must be, community must have the ability to park these vehicles, load them, unload them, as, you know, many of them are recreation vehicles, or many of them are commercial vehicles conducting business. The longer period of time that we have those vehicles parked out there, the more a safety concern that is created. That's why we, we left it at two hours.
And another question. The parking of recreational vehicles in the owner's driveway, inhabited or not inhabited, we have rules that the recreational vehicle must be behind a fence? Is that correct?
No, I believe you can park in your driveway. The problem maybe with that is more, more often than not, your, your private residential driveways won't accommodate a recreational vehicle due to the length of the recreational vehicle.
Okay.
You can't park it in such a fashion that you're going to block a sidewalk or a driveway.
No more questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to address this issue first before we open it. And we do understand that people have strong feelings about this item. However, in order to treat everyone with respect and not intimidate anyone from speaking, we ask that there be no applause, booing, or commenting from the audience. You may express your opinion when you are called upon to come to the podium and address the council. I will be using this gavel to alert speakers or audience members if they are being unruly and over their two-minute time period I've already expressed. Please, again, make your comments directly to the council, not to the audience, and after the public hearing has been closed, we will not take additional comments. Please take the opportunity to speak during the hearing. And we have many, many cards, so I'm going to read them three at a time. Reverend Kathy Crary, John Jordan, Anita Reese. Yes.
Oh, thank you. First of all, thank you for the Fog Fest money. I am the vicar of St. Edmund's Episcopal Church here in Pacifica, and we needed it, so thank you. I'm here to talk about the impact of the ordinance itself on the people who live in vehicles. And I know how this is, because I've had to do it myself. And to say that people do this because they want to, not because they have to, I can speak from personal experience that that is not always so. And that you can't make anything of yourself if you have lived out of your vehicle. I'm here to prove that wrong and say so. Now, I don't know if you know that song, have you ever had to make up your mind? I'm showing my age, sorry. And I don't know if you have, and I don't know if the words that I share with you will have any influence at all, but my faith requires me to speak, and to speak on behalf of people like myself who've had to live out of our vehicles. It's lonely, it's scary, it's alternately hot and cold, it's very uncomfortable. And so I can say as a member of the faith-based community and the vicar at St. Edmund's, that my church council and my parish is already ready to start the rotational business with putting people in our church. And we're ready to start right now with discovering whether or not the neighborhood will bear us the grace to put vehicles on our property. Vehicular housing vehicles.
Thank you very much. John, followed by Anita and Roger Macio.
No John Jordan? Or, could be different. We'll move to Anita.
So I just wanted to start off by thanking the city council and the staff for taking on the complex and multifaceted issue of homelessness in Pacifica. Homelessness in Pacifica is not new here. We've been documenting the need for resources since 2011, when we saw a significant jump during the county one-day homeless count. Since then, we've gotten more community, county resources to respond to this need, including the newly funded contract with the county to outreach to our unhoused, connecting them, specifically connecting them to services, and providing housing-centered case management with the ultimate goal of helping our unhoused to become housed. Given this, I ask you to postpone implementation until March of 2020 to give us time to connect to those folks who will be impacted by the ordinance. And I also encourage you, which I think is going to happen, encourage the council to be, to be responsible for adding any new parking restrictions that aren't on Table 1 and 2, but it sounds like that's going to happen anyways. So, thank you.
Roger, followed by Tiger and Ken Kirby.
My name is Roger Macio. I've lived in the beautiful city of Pacifica for 35 years. I hope the city council will adopt this ordinance. I think the ordinance can be adopted, and the task force and other good people can still go on trying to find a better solution. But there's a lot of people in Pacifica that are really into the environment, and when I, when I walk around or drive around now, I see all these RVs parked, and it's, doesn't look good. It's ruining our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiger, Ken Kirby, Carolyn Harmio. You're after Tiger first, then Ken Kirby. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jazz Twirls Big Stick of Pacifica. I was reminded that several years ago, when we started this conversation hearing, then-former Mayor Marianne Nyheart up there talking about her prior experience living out of her car. I am somebody who has, on occasion, had to have a friend living out of my driveway, so I know exactly what that looks like. And as to my coworker I mentioned earlier, I'll be seeking the counsel of my housemates to see if we can accommodate him in the not-too-distant future. The recommendation of the task force number six, if the city adopts an ordinance to restrict RV parking on city streets, it should be simultaneously implemented in conjunction with safe parking alternatives, so that the transition from street parking to alternative locations leaves the vehiculally housed with options. Enforcing an RV parking ban must include provision for emergency homeless parking, which I think genuinely is the compassionate approach. I also, like permitting for those who own RVs that are not inhabited, where is that? And it seems like that's the trifecta is addressing that 41% of Pacificans who are our neighbors who we want to take care of, because I think as neighbors, that is our duty, at least that's my opinion. Permitting those who aren't habitating or having people habitate, but they want their vehicle there and figuring out how to give them a process to allow that, which might also bring in city revenue, and simultaneously allowing time for the city to evaluate the recommendations of the task force. If this is done together, I believe that's the best possible approach to this going forward, which would be alternative actions, either three or four, introducing the ordinance in a later timetable than 30 days, or putting the ordinance back to staff for full analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Ken, followed by Carolyn Harmio and Betsy Giavononi.
My name is Ken Kirby. I'm a 60-year resident of Pacifica. I spent five years as a transportation safety commissioner, and I'm also an RV owner. I don't live in it, but I have one. The thing that comes to mind right away is that there is a need for certain individuals to find a place to put their RVs. Now, we have an RV park, has 20 empty spaces that are full hookups, and nobody ever asked. So the first thing you can do is to ask them, and then negotiate for the group of people and what have you. You would only need one monitor to take care of 20 people.
Keep talking.
I got, I still got a couple seconds here. Okay. It would take the city two new officers and two people from the city to take care of the garbage that they put up. But if you take and put them in an RV park where they can get it taken care of, then you can, well, let's see, it'll solve your problem, all right? But I do appreciate the commissioners that took care of this, and your, the group of people, they've worked very hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carolyn Harmio, Betsy, and Bob Hayes.
Good evening, council. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you publicly. I've spoken with, with each of you individually, and I know that we have in our council people who want to find solutions and that are problem solvers. So I'm counting on you tonight to follow through with those individual wishes, and I'm asking you to consider reaching out to other members of the community and forming some kind of partnership with the churches. Before you even do- Before you even do that, I think you need to not put any kind of ordinance that would change any of the parking codes until there is a safe parking program in place or that is being put or being implemented. And then I think the possibility of working with members of the faith community to establish and set up some of the rotational kinds of shelters is a very strong possibility. Other cities seem to do this, and other cities are safe, and I think we can put those two together. I think this is all in line with your goals that you've set several years back to make cities more compassionate as well as safe. So I'm urging you to amend any kind of ordinance so that there would be a safe parking program along with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Betsy, Bob, and then Aaron Macias.
Good evening. I'm Betsy Giovannoni. I'm a 40-year resident of Pacifica, and I'm here to urge you to please implement a safe parking area for people before you would enact a ban on the mobile homes in Pacifica, that you have something in place connected with the Resource Center to vet people and provide a safe place for them to park, and also provide for waste disposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, Aaron, and David Whitney.
Hi, good afternoon. Anyhow, I guess I feel kind of petty about this because I'm not homeless, but I have an RV. I've lived here for 52 years. I've had an RV from the time we moved down here. We just purchased an RV a year ago. If you pass this ordinance, from what I can see, there's about 40 blocks in our whole city that anybody can park on. I'm a senior. My wife and I can't load our RV in two hours. Lucky the street's wide enough because we're going to need medevac. So anyhow... And then that's not even taking into account all the married couples raising a family that both of them work. How are they supposed to take the kids on a camping trip or whatever? I mean, I raised... We raised our kids, took their friends and everything else. People aren't going to be able to do that to live here anymore. This used to be a working committee, a work in town, and people were on fixed incomes and that. And I think this ordinance... And I have one question. I don't know if it can be answered afterwards or whatever, but how many accidents have we had because of oversized vehicles? Because I've never seen one around here. And then as far as the bike lanes, when I drove truck, we weren't allowed to park in one of them. That was, I believe, that was a state law. So some of this sounds kind of redundant to me. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Aaron, followed by David, and then Reverend Brian Camara.
Good evening. I'm Erin Macias. The task force data represents a decrease in unhoused when residents are seeing an increase. That fractional representation does not paint a clear portrait of the circumstances that led to the current situation. Rents are not the sole source of housing displacement. We have not been provided with any evidence that the PRC has successfully facilitated statistically significant rehousing since the increase crisis began eight years ago. The task force proposals will require a tremendous amount of money to fund these programs, which we just don't have. I also wonder how can this proposal discriminate and classify locals-only unhoused without a legal challenge? I'm in favor of the proposed amendments in the ordinance. However, two hours is not sufficient loading and unloading time. The current lack of enforcement and loopholes in the existing ordinances do create conditions that are inconsistent with our strong environmental values, and they do present safety issues. We did have a fatality from an RV hitting a person. Oversized vehicles are blocking public access to our beaches and shopping areas, limiting safe ingress and egress for both residents and visitors to our beaches. As a very large boat owner that uses it regularly, ask our neighbors, we have provided off-street parking for our vehicle through that permit process that is currently required. A person who rents an RV, us, I understand how this affects both homeowners and renters. It is a much-needed addition to our community. Please introduce the ordinance.
Thank you. David, Reverend Brian, and Todd.
I'm glad I live in a planned development again because we live in a street that's on that list, under the 40-feet-narrow street. And this parking in the driveway, we had one neighbor down the block. He parked his RV in the driveway. Couldn't park it on the street, and it was out on the sidewalk, and he ran the power into his RV, and he just left it there. He's going to rent it out. Wife called up the association, and it was gone, and it has never been back since. So with this parking ordinance, you've got to get these things under control, and I think this is an excellent ordinance. I really support it, and I'm really proud of the engineering department and what they're doing. Also, in regard to the task force, you know, they have a... We support a temporary site for mobile waste. You know, we had a real huge discussion on Nextdoor about this. I mean, I had so many emails. The people are fed up with these RVs and homeless and drugs and the whole bit. So we've got to really get this thing under control and recommending in a group that we have an RV mobile site at our Fairmont Park, where they have a daycare center and everything else for recreation there was a stupid idea. And the way the city manager says this task force has nothing to do with the city, it's just recommend... It caused a definite confusion. I got an email in the safety from the police department saying that the city never recommended any mobile sites in Pacifica. So the whole thing is mixed up. I said, "You better get yourself straight with this task force and your relationship." Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Brian Camara, Todd Yule... Nope, sorry. Sorry. Two minutes. Todd Yule, and then Ellen Haig.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm the Reverend Brian Camara, pastor of St. Andrew Presbyterian Church. At St. Andrew, we are currently seeking a grant from the Regional Presbyterian Church to help fund a possible waste disposal truck to service Pacifica past the initial pilot program. Unfortunately, this is getting complicated. If tonight's ordinance passes, I don't believe that the funding will be approved. Because in order to secure funding for programs like these, you must demonstrate community support. There is no money if the community is not behind it. And if the community is willing to ban motorhomes on the eve of Christmas, the Presbyterian Church is not going to give you funds. The simple fact is that we want to help, but we can't do it if you fight us, and you're making it more difficult for us to serve this community. And it's Christmas. And at St. Andrew, we believe that Christmas is the story of a poor mother who had a child of limitless potential who was driven from her home to accommodate the whims of government. It's not a feel-good tale. It's a tragedy. Don't go down that road. Follow the recommendations of the task force. They worked hard. They have a plan. Safe parking first. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Yule, Ellen Haig, and Matthew Mallard.
My name is Todd Yule, Lindemar, mayor, city council, and staff. I want to thank you for addressing this issue. As it's been alluded to this evening, it's been going on for quite some time in various forms. It's kind of been coming to a head here recently. This is about traffic safety, which I agree with. I live up on Crespey. There are Sprinter vans. There are things parked everywhere, and I'm constantly crossing the middle line. No, there haven't been any head-ons, but there could be. So there's a safety issue in this I totally aligned with. But in addition, this entire topic, it breeds a sense of lawlessness. I drive around this town, whether it's people parking wherever they want. I go surfing, like, you know, daybreak. People are camping out there, cooking their breakfast. What message does this send? So I really think we need to enact this or adopt this ordinance change, but start sending a message where we're focusing on people that need the help. There's a lot of people floating around here that, for whatever reason, they're here doing what they need to do because it feels good or whatever. Let's focus on the people that really need the help. And I think what the task force has talked about is kind of going in the right direction. But again, we need some accountability. Who are these people? Do they really need help? What's the population that would participate in such a program? What would be the cap? We heard, we don't want to draw people from everywhere to participate, but how does that all work? So those are some questions I would look to the council and the task force to address. But again, we need to stem this whole lawlessness. We've got people walking around accosting people, I know, on the Pacific Trail, people living on the beach. I mean, we need to reel this in. Out-of-state parking plates, license plates, parking across multiple parking stalls, just because they feel like it. I mean, I feel bad for our police. They're trying to do the right things, but they need to be supported. And if we go forward with any of this, we need to write it down and actually execute on it and enforce it. And so like I said, I really, again, I thank you guys very much for worrying about this. I have compassion, but compassion without accountability just enables people to do whatever they want to do, and it hurts the people that really, really are paying for it.
Thank you. Ellen, followed by Matthew, and then Cynthia Kaufman.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Haig, leader with Faith in Action Bay Area, Pacifica Housing for All, and a member of this community for over 40 years. I'd like to acknowledge and thank the volunteers who worked on the Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force. I know they gave up countless hours and time with their families to meet, research, deliberate, and provide a report to the community with solutions. There are some legitimate concerns with oversized vehicles parked on city streets, but they can be addressed. They are not impossible to overcome. I truly hope the city council will consider and implement the findings of the task force report before moving forward with an ordinance that ignores the task force recommendations that does not provide any safe parking alternatives and bans people living in their motorhomes. The proposed task force solutions can be a win-win for the safety and well-being of all Pacificans. Finally, I'd like to share my observations. When I first moved here in 1974, Pacifica was an economically diverse community of working and middle-class families. Homelessness was not a problem. There wasn't all the divisiveness within the community because people could at least afford to rent an apartment in Pacifica and go about their lives. I hope the people who will be affected, who are listening and waiting for your decisions that will directly affect their lives, can be assured that you cared, were willing to consider them, and make the extra effort it will take to follow the recommendations of the task force and the Pacifica Resource Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, Cynthia, and Jeff Cinder.
Good evening, everyone. Glad I could make it tonight. I was anxious to speak to you all. It's taken a lot of courage for me to stand before you tonight, and I'm not comfortable sharing for all to know, but I can't idly sit by while you make decisions that will ultimately make my life harder than it needs to be. The citizens of this community have asked, "Who are these people in RVs?" Well, this is who one of them is, and may be news to some of you who know me. My name is Matthew Mallard. I've lived in Pacifica since 1970. I grew up here. I went to Lindemar School, and I graduated Terranova High School. I have owned a home and been a renter here in Pacifica. I was displaced because of a rent increase of 115%. Living in an RV is not what people are making it out to be. I have no power. I have no running water. I just have a roof over my head. These are just some of the sacrifices I've had to make, all while continuing my education as a full-time student, and I am also on the PRC caseload and housing lists. I've been successful in my past, and I will be successful again. In the meantime, this is all I have. Pacifica is very important to me. It is where my support system and network are located. To move out of Pacifica takes us away from me, including my residency, and can affect my benefits that I surely need. I've heard this council speak of compassion and dignity. Tonight's agenda does not reflect either. You called for and assembled the task force to address the issue. 11 volunteer citizens of this community worked diligently to bring a report to you, and for what? I believe this council has done its job of... Has not done its job of due diligence. I also believe that you don't even have to make any decisions tonight. I suggest that you follow up with the data collected by the Pacifica Resource Center, San Mateo County, and the Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force, so you can make an informed decision.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Todd. Jeff Cinder. I think Cynthia Kaufman left. John Keener, and then Sharon Ryan.
Hi, I'm Jeff Cinder, 30-year resident of Pacifica. So I support very strongly a parking enforcement code here in town. I'll bring up two issues here that's not really talked about. A temporary site for mobile waste disposal at...
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. A temporary site for mobile waste disposal at 2212 Beach Boulevard. I think it'll never be temporary. The city needs funds. I'm a big believer that we should find a developer as soon as possible to build a hotel or housing or a small office building on that site. We need it, and don't complicate that issue. It was also brought up about the decentralized neighborhood proposal. What a terrible, terrible, terrible idea. That's causing... It'll cause a civil war with neighbors. You're not going to find four neighbors who are going to agree on something like that at all. I just think that it's bringing the problem to the front door of people, and that's... It's a terrible thing. It's cancerous. So I think that idea should be canceled immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. John Keener, Sharon Ryan, and Jerry Foley.
Hi, I'm John Keener. Hello, council and staff. Homelessness is a big and difficult problem, as everybody has discovered. I applaud the unhoused in Pacifica task force's recommendations. I would like the council to consider amending the ordinance tonight with some kind of safe parking or city-leased parking that can be implemented before the ordinance takes effect. Or to have a PRC-mediated permitting system for the very limited on-street parking that would result from the ordinance. I would also like to note that among the advocates for the homeless this evening are a number of Pacifica's clergy. They represent our moral center. And thanks to the Unhoused in Pacifica Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Ryan, followed by Jerry Foley and Gloria Stofan. No Sharon. Okay, Jerry, Gloria, and then Victoria Becker.
Good evening, council. I'm Father Jerry Foley, and I'm the parish priest at St. Peter in Pacifica. I'm here because I want to respond to a comment on an email that I received today in reference to the homeless. And the email stated that the faith communities in Pacifica are unwilling to help and have told people so. And I just want to share with you that, to put it very, very politely, that's absolutely incorrect. Faith communities and congregations, religious congregations and their people do tremendous good each and every day, and yet they cannot do it alone. They work in partnership. They can't do the work of the city. And yet we are more than willing to help. And I would invite you, council members, to work directly with your task force and their recommendations, and with the faith communities, to provide a safe place for our most vulnerable neighbors to live temporarily until we together seek more permanent solutions for them.
Thank you. Gloria, then Victoria Becker, and Drew Ross.
Good evening, city council members and city staff, and thank you, task force members, for taking so much time and effort. It was really, I thought, a very good presentation. It gave us a little more clarity. It gave us a little more clarity. The issue's a very complicated and serious one, and definitely one that will affect lives. Many suggestions and recommendations did come up during the UP Task Force forum, good ones, positive ones. I'm hoping that the council will listen to the task force and direct city staff to move and take action on amending the ban on RVs, by which the ordinance will not take effect until off-street vetting, safe parking areas, and/or permitted parking for motor homes is in place. Those who agree to work with the Pacifica Resource Center will be vetted and monitored. Those who do not will be needing to move on. I too am concerned about the safety and health of our Pacifica residents. The plan can work and is working in other communities, such as Walnut Creek, Palo Alto, Oakland, Santa Barbara. This plan, under the direction and management of the Pacifica Resource Center, will give hope and help to those who are out in the elements. As a community, we need to think of our fellow human beings as neighbors and make sure that they treat, they are treated as we would want to be treated. Thank you for your time and your service as city council members.
Thank you, Gloria. Victoria, Drew, and Julie Sterben. Okay. Oh, Drew is gone? Okay.
Hi, my name is Victoria Becker. I'm here from Pacifica Social Justice. I have a couple things to say. One, I attended the community meeting, and I was struck by the report given by people from the Pacifica Resource Center that said that this so-called problem of vehiculally housed was, at a point in time, in this current moment, 20 to 30 vehicles could be dealt with. It's a problem that could be taken care of. So that, what that means is there has to be political will. Over and over again, people have suggested things, various congregations have said they're willing to do things. What's missing is the political will from, I guess, from Pacifica government. The second thing I want to talk about is this ordinance seems completely misguided and hastily put together. And it's really in response to this sort of angry, small-minded, objectifying of vehiculally housed. It's in response to all the people saying things like, "I just want them to go away. I have mine. There's no, they shouldn't be, they should just be moved off. Go away. They have drug problems." It's an objectifying, a subhumanizing of people who live in different circumstances than people who live in houses, and it's just so wrong. So all I can say is that if the city of Pacifica doesn't figure out a way to deal with what is a relatively small problem right now, then they are just, it's unconscionable, and it makes me upset every single time I think about it, that I even live here.
Thank you. Julie Sterben. Teri Eichelbarger.
I sent an email to the council this morning, so you actually already know what I think. So I'm going to read this poem that was printed in today's newspaper by a man in New Jersey. "You can think about this, you can think about that, you can think where you stand, you can think where you sat. Oh, the things you can think if you only try. You can think of one truth instead of ten lies. And it may not end there, you can think of much more, like opening your heart, not shutting a door. You can wonder aloud, 'Did I do what I could, not just to do bad, but this once to do good? Think and think again, and then a third time, and maybe you'll learn. Thinking is not a crime. You can think of your buildings that reach to the sky, you can think of your planes that fly so high, but maybe, just maybe, instead, think of others, those who have little, those who just suffer. And if you think to yourself, 'Oh, I can't do that. That would cost far too much. Let me be where I'm at,' then know that we think that you can do better. Just learn a new alphabet with no "I" as a letter. Oh, the things you could think if only you try. The sky is the limit in a world with no "I.'" I just hope that the council will vote to delay this ordinance until a safe parking place program is in effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri, followed by Andrea Dionne and Bridget Duffy.
Good evening. Thank you, city council, for standing in the middle of a hornet's nest. I know it can be uncomfortable, and thank you to the task force too, who also similarly seem to be in the middle of the hornet's nest. Teri Eichelbarger, I'm a member of the San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission. I'm a pastor of a church in San Mateo. I'm a resident and a homeowner here in Pacifica. To use a biblical metaphor, they're our sheep of our pasture, of our flock, that need safe parking. And it could serve right alongside some kind of a prohibition of other parking. I'm not in support of that. Your support of that kind of program will make funding available. So you could wait on the ordinance, as many people have said. The staff acknowledged that it needs more work, that it needs more revision, analysis. Or you could make a specific motion to move forward with staff support on a safe parking program. Or you could amend this ordinance to give a specific exception to a safe parking program as a good-faith expression of your connection to it. So there are many ways to keep moving forward in some way that's realistic, and as the other pastor expressed, besides, you know, cutting it off. I also want to note that I studied this ordinance and its original publication in the packet. And just now I looked at it, and it looks like it's changed significantly in the exemptions section. Some of the wording has changed. And so I'm wondering whether or not those changes happen within the legally required public notice for publication things, publicating things for us to observe. And I'm wondering if that was illegal, within the legal time zone for changes. I might also suggest that there's a lot of craftspersons, besides construction folks, who might like those permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Dionne, Bridget Duffy, and Denny Asness.
Morning, council, staff members. From Jonathan's initial comments, to me, it seems very apparent that the task force is pretty biased. I'm a lifelong Pacifica resident and a homeowner. I don't need to be lectured. I do not need to be told that I am privileged. You do not know me. You don't know what my life has been like, or what I have had to do to be in the living situation that I am in. Many people in this room know my mother. She worked up to five part-time and full-time jobs as a single mom to keep us in our house. She's now retired and on a fixed income. Her house, the value of her house, is her safety net. Does the city not have an obligation to spend her tax dollars responsibly and to protect her property values? I support an ordinance not allowing oversized vehicles to park on any public roadway. I do not believe it would be fiscally responsible for the city to pay for a safe parking program. If the city is to allow a safe parking program, I suggest that the vehicles be allowed to park on the street, the vehicles in the program, in non-residential areas, not in a city-funded parking lot. The program would also have to be coupled with the oversized ordinance and should only last for a specific amount of time. So in three to six months after implementing the ordinance, this should be over. After that, everyone, the oversized ordinance, should be enforced strictly and give our police department the tools they need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridget, Denny, and then Deborah Jovis.
Come on, people. A little laughing wouldn't hurt anybody. Hello, my name is Bridget Duffy, and I'm just going to do a brief history lesson because I think it is important to find, not to look at this moment as to how we got here. During the Depression, Roosevelt passed a Glass-Steagall Act that protected residential housing from investors making high profits. In other words, it was a regulation that prevented high profits from being made off of any residential housing. And it kept our economy and our society stable for 70-long years. It's the longest period in U.S. history that we had that kind of stability and growth. And as everybody knows, in 1999, we were doing pretty good. That was when the Glass-Steagall Act got overturned. By 2008, the deregulation resulted in the massive collapse in the mortgage industry, which was a crime. It wasn't a crisis. It was a crime, and people did go to trial and be convicted for committing crimes, which resulted in trillions of dollars worth of property being taken from the American people. By 2010, the corporations that were mostly the investors in this project were raising the rents to unreasonable, unjustifiable, and inhumane rents. And that is how we wound up with homelessness. Homelessness is not a crime. These people are victims. The real lawlessness here is that we have a government that is run by the real estate industry themselves. And that is what has to change if we want fair housing again and fair elections again. So the ordinance itself...
Thank you, Bridget. You're done.
No, absolutely not.
Bridget, you're done.
I'm not done.
Denny Asness, followed by Debra, Deborah Jovis.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking the task force and also Anita for their compassionate and in-depth work. It's really appreciated. We really need a safe parking program in place before we even contemplate a ban on motor homes. Please, it's important to do the right compassionate thing here. Don't let Pacifica be known as the heartless, vindictive city on the coast, when there are solutions to this issue that can serve people. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Jovis, followed by Dave Jovis and Peter Loeb.
Hi, I'm Deborah Jovis. It seems, under this proposed ordinance, that there's relatively few streets where it's going to be acceptable to park. I'm concerned that if, for the communities that have one of these streets, that they're going to be inundated with these RVs. I live in one of those neighborhoods. I'm not excited about that. I also agree, there was a speaker who said how expensive this is going to be. I agree. If we are going to be allowing people to be, I guess, parking in my neighborhood, it would be nice to know that they're actually going to be enrolled in one of these programs so that they can transition to housing. I don't just want to open up my neighborhood so that people can live in my neighborhood. Somebody had said that people don't accept help, possibly because they think someone else is deserving of the help, or maybe they just don't want people being intrusive in their lives. But please, if there, maybe there's going to be, we could have a permitting process where you have to enroll in a program in order to be allowed to park on the street at all. But moving everyone to my neighborhood, it's not cool. Please don't do that. Thank you.
Dave Jovis, followed by Peter Loeb and Lori Bowie Parish.
Council members, thank you. My name is Dave Jovis. I've been a resident in Pacifica since 1972. I appreciate the work that the task force has done. However, I think it's misguided, and I think there's going to be unintended consequences when you open up a sign that we're in business for all these RVs. I think you're going to get all the RVs in the area. And I don't think we have the money to support such a program in the city. In terms of the ordinance, I would support, or I ask the council members to support a ban across the board, as my wife had just mentioned, that we are in one of those neighborhoods that is the minority, that has one of those 45 streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Loeb, Lori Bowie Parish, Lynn Adams.
Good evening. Thanks to the task force. Thanks to city council members for being here. I've been here since 1975. I used to know several people living in their vehicles in my neighborhood in West Rockaway. They lived in vans, cars. One man lived in his pickup truck with a camper on the back. This proposed ordinance wouldn't affect those people at all. And in fact, a ban on oversized vehicles just encourages people to get a vehicle that's less than 22 feet long and shorter than eight feet high. It encourages people to be in vans, campers, cars. This makes no sense to me. The previous speaker just mentioned unintended consequences. There's a major unintended consequence that's waiting to happen. I've been a researcher, consultant in Health and Human Services for 40-some-odd years. The first thing you need to do is define the problem. If you come up with a solution first, it's never going to work. In this case, I think that the solution of an oversized vehicle ban is, you've essentially defined the problem as oversized vehicles. The problem is people living in their vehicles who are unhoused. There are programs and services that will address that problem that are successful, are effective. Safe parking is one of them. There are others. They're all over the country. If the council would simply give lip service to the idea of supporting...
Thank you, Peter.
...a safe parking program, it would help.
You're done. Thank you. Lori Bowie Parish, Lynn Adams, and Deej Gold.
My name is Lori Bowie. I live in Lindemore, and I also have a recreational vehicle. I'm really against the dump pumps that's going to be located right out here, where children play, where people are, you know, doing activities, seniors. The pump stations take a really long time to dump, and also, you have, a lot of people do not turn their motors off. They have idling, and diesel really smells horrible. And I'm afraid that people will now come from all over to use this as a dump site. Daily City and, you know, San Francisco will use this as free dumping stations, even across the street in our beautiful ocean. And they will, it's just really ugly and nasty. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Adams, and the last card I have is Deej Gold.
Lynn Adams, Pacific Manor. I just recently read an article, by the way, I'd like to say I really appreciate everybody's views and that there's so many people here that care, and that we are coming together that we can come up with some solutions. I recently saw an article in the San Francisco Chronicle about a family that hosted a homeless youth. Adopted this youth into their home, became a sister to their own daughter, provided a support system for this young woman, who went on to get back into school, found a place to live, and is on her feet. My question really is, this family gained a lot of valuable experience. They gained empathy. They gained a different point of view, and it was a contribution to their family. My question is, what experiences are we missing? What experiences are we not getting by having the homeless and the unhoused in the street, and we don't know them? We're not helping them? We don't even know what to do? But we're here today to look at, what can we do? I've heard three faith-based organizations come forward and say they're willing to step up. I'd be willing to step up. Okay? I could find some places in our neighborhood that we could, I could rally some neighbors that could join together to help a family get their foot on the ground. Who else can do that? I know that we have that in here. I know that Pacifica is a very giving community, that we're supportive of each other. We have a lot to gain. We have a lot to gain, and we can do it. We have a lot to gain, and we can do it.
Hi, my name's Deej Gold. I'm sorry, I'm the last speaking speaker card. I want to thank the task force and the Pacifica Resource Center for doing such thorough work with virtually no public resources. This city has failed in its mandate to create affordable housing. This city doesn't have public housing. This city doesn't have programs for homeless people or unhoused people. This city, the city, the city government has not done that. The Pacifica Resource Center has done that. Individual church organizations have done that. Various individuals have done that. But as a city, as a community, we're not doing our job to house people, and housing is a human right. So I can't understand why you're going to take away the roof over people's heads. I am very tired of hearing of the count, not of the unhoused people, but of the unhoused people who die on Bay Area streets every year due to exposure. You read those, you read those numbers. I don't want Pacifica streets to be contributing to those numbers. The traffic analysis was kind of interesting. I ride a bike around Pacifica, and God knows it's a dangerous place for bicycle, and I am glad that you appear to be going to create many more bike lanes. But you could make the streets wider in this analysis by just saying, okay, then on certain streets, we won't park on one side of the street or the other. And that would then reinstitute a whole bunch of other options for where you could allow the large vehicles to park. And the two-hour exemption is kind of idiotic because it takes longer than that to move into a house or move out of a house, so moving vans would be illegal. So obviously, this thing was drawn up in haste to support this anti-homeless measure so that you could have a safety cover for what is essentially a really mean proposal. Thanks very much.
Thank you. That's the final card. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to speak on this? Please come forward and fill out a card. You can come forward first and fill out the card second.
Who was the last? My name is Igor Klitschitzky. I'm relatively fresh compared to many, we just moved to Pacifica about one year ago. I would like to say that a lot of people forgot that in California, it's illegal sleeping in a car. Just because we have this housing crisis, police is closing the eyes and give people possibility to sleep. I live in this country about 20 years. I was in different stages. I was almost homeless myself. I sleep in a car for quite a time. But the difference that I hear all the time, we do not have any timeline when we're going to implement any, either solution or restrictions. I think we need timelines. It's really important. Everybody who is in the business, they know without timelines, you'd never achieve the goal. Second, the most important, people who participate in the program, they need to participate in the county programs. Like, I was really disappointed reading and hearing again that people refuse to use dumping stations that are available for them in Half Moon Bay, including coverage the gasoline. If they participate in the program, they need to use available programs by county, by the city, by the nonprofit organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, see, no one else. I'm going to bring this back to council. And close the public hearing. Who wants to go first? Want to have a break? We've been here since 5:30, so we would like to take a five-minute break.
And can I just say, it's 10:15 right now. Do we want to make a motion to not go past a certain hour? And also to note that I have a hard out at 11:45 due to my babysitter constraints.
You have to be home at 11:45?
I have to leave here at 11:45.
Let's make it 11:45.
Yeah. Should we make a vote? Should we have a vote?
Summoned.
Second.
Hi.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's none opposed. 11:45. We need to start the meeting back because we do have a limited time. We are ending at 11:45. So this public hearing was closed and brought back to council. Who would like to start?
Please, look at me.
I have a pretty straightforward question, just to start. There was a mention about the updated agenda that was put forward and a potential that the ordinance as published the second time differed from the language that was published the first time. Could someone address that, please?
I have a question. No.
Accountability.
I do, I know. I do want to make clear, though, that the ordinance that was published initially is the same ordinance that was attached to the agenda packet that you have tonight, or that is being distributed tonight. There were no changes that were made.
Okay, thank you.
That was my first quick easy one.
Michelle, we heard the report from the unhoused task force, and you were quite adamant we could not talk about that tonight. Okay? How do we go about commenting, talking about that, or whatever?
Well, the purpose of that agenda item was just for the council to receive a report. If the council would like to have deliberation on what the... If the council would like to have deliberation on what the up task force said, we should schedule another agenda item for a future council meeting where you can do that. Tonight was strictly to allow the task force to provide the council with their report. The only action or deliberation on the agenda for the council tonight is really related to the ordinance.
Okay, so if we wanted to schedule a study session or put it on the council meeting...
The council can direct staff to do that as part of your deliberations.
Okay.
And if I could, what I would add to that is, you know, part of that is the staff, the city received the report the same time everybody else did, so we haven't had time to analyze it and, you know, be able to provide any additional information about the recommendations that they're making or be able to, you know, really speak from the city's perspective, the financial perspective, locations, et cetera, for that report. So there was a lot of work that we would need to do related to providing information to the council.
I don't know about the other rest of the council, but I would like to explore the task force report more, and I don't know whether we'd want to do that in a meeting or a study session.
Let's put down our parking lot for a minute. Wait.
All right, I'll go ahead. Hello, everybody. Thanks for staying. Thanks for coming out. It's really important that you guys are here. I'm always going to tell you that because I mean that from the bottom of my heart. It's so important that you're civically engaged here. I want to address a comment that was made by somebody who I respect a ton about PRC that they haven't successfully housed people, so I urge you, urge you to make an appointment, talk with Anita as much as you can, because I don't want that kind of information going out, because I know that the PRC has been successful in housing people. So I just wanted to make that really clear before I go on with the rest of what I have to say. So for starters, it's really obvious that we need to do something, right? That we need to have some kind of parking restrictions here in the city. That's very obvious. I think we've all known that for a long time. However, we have an opportunity to do this right and to do it once and for all and to do it right. We can do a holistic approach and come back with an ordinance that includes a permitting process for people who own their RVs, just regular old recreational vehicles, so that they can park. It can include a permitting process for people who want to be vetted. They can go through coordinated entry with the county. They can get a case manager at PRC, and they can, we can collaborate with our faith communities and have somewhere for these people to park so that they can get connected to services. They can be vetted, so people in our, in our community will not be afraid of them. We can have the parking ordinance, so they will not be on the street. There is a way to do this where we can address everything. We can address the health and safety issues. We can address our neighbors in our community who need some help. We can address people who have come up and said, "Please don't send them all to my neighborhood." We don't want to do that either, right? We don't want to send them all to your neighborhood. I appreciate you coming tonight. I really do. But I think we need to really stop and think about what we can do together, because it's time for us to come together. And I heard three different faith communities come up here tonight and said they're willing. There's 15 other faith communities out there, maybe more, in our city. I'm not throwing it all at the faith community, but there's space there, and it's not having people parking on the street. And, you know, I feel really strongly that the number of people who are from Pacifica, have ties to Pacifica, and want to honestly get connected to services will be not as many as we think it's going to be, right? And so we can have a limited number of permits. We can help those people who really want the help, because they're going to have to jump through hoops to do it, right? So that's, a lot of people aren't going to be able to do that. The people who don't belong here, who are just, you know, sitting like out at the beach or working in San Francisco, they're not going to be able to be here anymore. But we can work together, and we can address all of it. You know, I think all of us up here want to do that. And I know there's been a lot of emails out there, a lot of people, some really respectful emails, some not-so-respectful emails, you know. I truly believe that we have an opportunity to do this and to do it really well. And so I know I'm going to have more to say in a few minutes.
Okay, I'm going to talk out of order.
Go for it.
I'm really thankful that the people who are living in motorhomes have roofs over their heads. Saturday was a horrendous day, and I can't imagine the people living in a tent on the beach that I've seen for the past three days. And so I am thankful that they have roofs over their heads. I did bring this up, and I want to thank the task force for all of their time so far, but I haven't seen a solution. And I talked about the faith communities, because no one has brought that forward to us. Every once in a while, someone says, "Oh, yeah, we'll do it." Where is something that's in writing that confirms that they're going to do something? Because I've never seen it. Nothing. I've heard the opposite. I've heard that they were not willing to do anything, and that's what I've heard. We don't have spare land. This is a bedroom community. We don't have office buildings that are empty. We don't have big parking lots where no one is located. That's not Pacifica. We don't have business. We don't have the support of Google and Facebook that are helping these other communities with their issues. They're, they're part of the cause. They're part of the problem, excuse me. And we don't have that to help us. Our largest employer is the school district, followed by Safeway. They're not going to contribute like some of the other cities. This has gone for five months, and that's the reason I brought it back up. We talked about it in February. I know it took time to get the task force together, but in the meantime, this has exasperated, I'm going to say grown, larger and larger by the day. A count of 30 is almost impossible, and I'm going to ask the chief, at the last count, how many did you count?
Over the past couple, over the past couple weeks, we did a couple informal counts.
Thank you.
Surely not capturing them all, but in the evening hours on two weekdays and on two weekend days, we counted upwards of an average of 50. But that includes, as Anita restated, the numbers that came up were only for the north end.
Right.
But what we were counting was encompassing the areas in the north and the south into Pacifica where we knew that the vehicles have been.
And this is Pacifica, not north and south. We're one, one city. The reason that I brought this forward is because it all takes time. It's not going to be Christmas, because even if we pass this ordinance tonight, the second reading isn't till the middle of January, and we can put a time period after that, giving the task force time to come up and the faith organizations time to come forward and bring us concrete plans, which we have yet to see. So it'll be well past Christmas and sometime into next year. And that's why I brought it up now, because I see the problem growing, and I brought it up because it does take a long time. Everything in city government takes a long time. So, and we still could continue, of course, with the task force and have them bring back additional ideas for us. Oddstead, I've gotten several calls about Oddstead. If we restrict parking in a lot of areas, then Oddstead would be one of the main places where the motorhomes would be allowed to park. And again, they're going to say they don't want it there. Fairmont doesn't want it there. Pedro Point doesn't want it there. None of the neighborhoods actually want it in their backyard, and that's a normal response that we get for everything. And that's, that's all over. Don't, you know, it's great to house them, but don't do it near me. So I'm going to stop for a minute and let someone else talk.
Go ahead. So I just want to say that there are, there were many, many comments tonight that were very spot on with regard to identifying problems. And in my opinion, there are a lot of problems, and I don't think one ordinance or one resolution is going to resolve them all. I think it's going to have to be a few. However, the one that's before us tonight has to do with safety and parking of oversized vehicles on the street, and the issue that that addresses is safety. That's a discrete problem. It's part of a universe of other solutions. I agree with Councilmember Beer. I'm thrilled. I'm encouraged and thrilled, actually, to hear three specific faith communities come forward and specifically publicly say they're ready to move, because I've been hearing about it for a long time, and I have been supporting it for a long time and been happy that it's been moving for a long time. When Faith in Action was PIA, when Kathy Kern was first working with them, it's been an issue. It's been a concern. It's been movement's been happening, and now action is happening, and that is what we need. So partnership involves action on the part of all the part, all the parties. And so that is a big excitement for me, and I agree. If we can get that up to, I don't know, five, six? I don't know, about 15, but, you know, right? You never know. So that's exciting. That's one thing. And the other thing I want to say is regarding problems, you're right that this isn't just a parking problem or just a health and safety problem. It's a housing problem. And there have been many in the community that have worked really hard to restrict the building of housing in this community. So that's something that's going to have to change. It's easy. We just wait a little time. The state's going to change it for us. But like many things, we're going to want to put our own spin on it. We're going to want to make it happen for us the way we want it in Pacifica, not the way Sacramento wants it in Pacifica. So the framework and the mindset around housing and the building of affordable housing in this community is going to have to change. And like I keep saying, not everybody's going to get what they want. Not everybody's going to get even 50% of what they want. But as a community, we're going to all give a little and get a little. And so to wrap it up, I'm going to say that I am in support of the ordinance as presented. I would like to have a discussion about timeline in light of the mayor's comments about how long things take, but a specific conversation about like really how long. Thanks.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Nope.
So, but would you be in support of a permitting process? Because the city would have to be a part of that, right?
Yeah, absolutely. But that's why I said, in regard to a series of ordinances or resolutions.
Right.
Yeah. And I'm going to need a primer on what's an ordinance and what's a resolution, because I heard some things tonight about the city's mandate to provide affordable housing, and I'm not, I don't remember where that is exactly. I can imagine a resolution in support of, especially when there are actions and partnerships that want to take action that the city, to Anita Reese's point, isn't supportive but isn't doing itself. But we need to demonstrate, whatever, a willingness to support that action happening. So I see that as, I see the permitting thing as another thing, another piece of this puzzle
Yes.
that is going to have to be done, but I see this parking one as doable now.
Thanks for letting me do that.
So we originally talked about this in our goal-setting session, and we drew, we drew a picture up on the whiteboard in our goal-setting session back in March, and it went something like this. The issue's in the middle. This is the way we sort of are approaching things now. The issue's in the middle, and the issue is homeless and vehiculally housed, and it was not just a city issue, right? We pulled in the unhoused folks. We pulled in the housed folks. We pulled in business community, faith-based community, and the city has a seat at this table. And we decided that because it's not just a city issue, everybody has to have some skin in the game. And I think everybody does have some skin in the game, and I appreciate the faith-based community coming out tonight and announcing that formally. And I think that what the community is looking to hear now is that the city also has some skin in the game. So I understand that we're...
Earlier, no clapping, please.
I understand that we are, are not, are, it's very hard to not talk about the unhoused report, so I'm trying to not do that. So stop me. So my question is, to us, what do you think? About basically saying, yeah, we do have some skin in the game. We do, we are willing to support something that is, that is, that balances out this ban that's being proposed tonight, because that's what we're proposing tonight. It's a ban. Okay? There's, if I wrote this, I would have liked to have seen something more representative of California. And just give me a minute to preach here. I would have loved to have seen something that says, "You can park anywhere you want in the daytime, but at nighttime, you know, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, you can't park in these areas." Something similar to what most of the other towns are doing. In case you didn't know, I'm sorry to call people out here, but the city manager of Half Moon Bay is here tonight, because what do you think happened when San Francisco started enforcing their ban about three weeks ago? City of Pacifica got 25 more vehicles, and I can't identify those vehicles, because I drove by them every day on my way to work on Ocean Beach. They're here now. So if the city manager wants to see which ones are going to be in his neighborhood next, take a drive in Pacifica, because that's what we're doing. We're just pushing it down the road. But, but this solution doesn't do that. This is the solution that we, it's a couple solutions. So if we just put a ban in tonight, I would feel better if we all agree that we still want a seat at this table as a council, that we definitely want to implement some sort of safe parking program, maybe not even implement the ban until the program is in place, and really just sort of support our, our initiative that says we, we want to call the solutions for our housing. We don't have a lot of land that's being proposed for our housing, excuse me, our housing requirements. So, so those that, that believe that we don't want to put forth housing, it's, it's not true. We do. But for lack thereof, people are coming up with their own alternatives to housing. So let's at least try to come up with some measures to help them out. And the only other thing I would say is, you know, this is California. It's not, it's not New Jersey, where you have to pay to get on the beaches, where everybody's watching your every move. I think that this place was born on, you know, borrowing some sugar or, you know, passing the joint, if you will. So I would like to hear other council members' support of, of a safe parking program at the same time as this ban. Otherwise, I'm not so sure I can support the ban.
I think a lot of why this is even before us is because of fear. I think people fear for their safety, their both physical and sanitation in terms of, you know, just what happens. I have to admit, I'm not real fond of this kind of ban or this ordinance, because it does seem kind of draconian. However, we have to do something, because there is a large segment of the community that is not happy, is fed up, and wants something done. I am fully supportive of a safe park plan. I do think we should change this ordinance. The two-hour limit seems to be kind of unreasonable. I would think we should almost think about it overnight. I would think we should almost think about an overnight permit for people, you know, to load up and go for the vacation or whatever. I think I would really like to look at some sort of permitting in other cities. I've heard of one that they require a dump receipt in order to get a city permit. And I am concerned somewhat about the dumping of just the household, you know, the waste, the cans, the papers, and stuff like that. I would really like to explore some of the information the Unhoused Task Force gave us. And I would also like to take and see about the enforcement of the ban maybe being delayed until, for the Unhoused Task Force to try to come up. But I'm also not willing to do it like five or six months. I think we need to take, and people are angry, and I think we need to do, we need to address that. But I do, I am certainly willing to delay the implementation of the task for, excuse me, of the ordinance, to give the task force the opportunity to come back to council and flush out some of their programs or their plans, possibly their funding.
Okay. I have a couple more things. So, Anita Reese clearly asked, you know, to postpone until March. I would say maybe April, but, you know, push it a little bit. And one thing is because they just received the contract from the Samhail County Center on Homelessness to do the outreach. And so, in order for them to be able to do that, they're going to need time. In order for us to collectively come up with some ideas where we can get people permitted and connected to services, we're going to need some time. So the only way that I could support the ban is if I knew that there was going to be enough time for us to collaborate and get some things done on the other end.
Do you have, do, oh, go ahead.
I just had a question, staff. My understanding is that ordinances are generally, if approved, generally take effect 30 days after the day of approval. If, is that correct? In general?
After the second reading.
After the second reading, which is going to happen in January. Once it's approved, then it's a 30-day, that's standard. It's no less than that unless it's an emergency ordinance and all that. So, timeline at this point, with regard to what has been put before us tonight, would be?
February 9th.
February 9th at the earliest. Okay. I know she can't really respond, but I'm going to presume that Anita referred to March because there are quarterly deadlines, that grants go in certain cycles and such things as that. I have a feeling there's some piece of that involved. And I understand the need for time to have a community meeting, to have the council talk about it, you know, whatever you were alluding to, Mike, and Mary too, with the different pieces. But I do feel we need to keep this piece as its own piece. Not wait for that stuff and come with some bigger unified thing that's all together. I think this is one piece, and a permit process is another piece, and would be developed separately.
However, if we have an ordinance that, that puts parking restrictions in before we have a permit process in place, then people are going to be displaced. And then they're going to have a hard time getting connected to services here if they're not still here. That's my main concern, is that we're going to be, we need to be able to make sure that we can help the people who really want to be connected to services. And I would hate to, to restrict something that's, that's going to get in the way of that. You see what I mean? I don't want to displace people.
Mm-hmm. I do. I hear, I hear what you're saying. And so, I guess something none of us sitting on this dais can answer is, you know, what is the timeline for safe parking in the faith community? We don't know. But I'm assuming a few months is within reach?
I, okay, I'm just throwing out a date. Okay, I would suggest maybe, since February, since just the normal course of law, this would not be effective till February 9th. Then we hold off on the effective date to be March 1st. Okay? And if the Unhoused Task Force is actually coming back with some solutions, possible funding sources that are, you know, pretty firm, we can revisit that and delay it if we wish. All right? Because we, we could do that, city attorney?
Yes.
So if, on February 15th, I'm just picking a date, right? Go ahead.
Well, we would have to amend the ordinance, which would require a first reading, and then a second reading, and then 30 days following that. So you, so we would have to plan for an extension request in January, in order to make it effective by March 1st.
We couldn't indicate that now? That we'd like it to take effect 60 days after the second reading?
No, you can do that, but
Okay.
but I think what Councilmember O'Neill is asking, what if we decide at a future date that it needs to go beyond March 1st? And what I'm saying is, the way to accomplish that, after you've adopted this ordinance that has an effective date of March 1st, we'd have to amend the ordinance once again to create a different effective date. So, if, if you're thinking that April 1st may be a more, you know, likely date when all of this information will be compiled and you'll know more, then you may want to make the effective date April 1st.
When I spoke to you once about some previous issue about ordinances and stuff, you stated that we could actually take, pass this tonight as is, except with an amendment, it would not be effective until another council vote. So then we would be able to, we vote on this tonight, the second reading is January 9th, and the time, the timeline would continue to run until the council takes a vote to start enforcing that ordinance.
Well, I think we're talking about a different issue with regard to that. It depends on, what are you trying to achieve in terms of an effective date? Tell me what you want to achieve, and then I can work on figuring out how we can effectively do that.
I can tell you a couple things I would like to achieve. I would really like to have an engineering report on, on the stretches of road that could be possibly available for parking, for one. So I would like to see some, something come back to us about that. I would like enough time for PRC to be able to get their outreach worker in place, to be able to do outreach to these folks, and, I know there's more.
I have an issue...
Oh, the task force.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, and information on a permitting process. Because I know we're throwing everything at the task force, and, you know, we are not supposed to make requests of the task force, but we can ask staff to come back with some more detailed information about a permitting process. A permitting process for people who have RVs, that are recreational vehicles, and a permitting process for folks who want to get connected to services.
And I remember when we talked about this, I don't know, a couple months, a couple weeks ago or something? There was staff, on the 25th, I think Denise was here, and, and the statement was that anything to do with the permitting would take longer because of the amount of research that would be involved.
Correct.
So that's why I see it as a separate thing. Because I think, with the exception of what Councilmember, a few folks have brought up about the timing of the 120 minutes piece, which I, the thing I'm looking at, it's on page 12. If we were to make that, a diff, a different time, make a request for a different time than 120 minutes, what would happen? Would we?
We could do that tonight.
Okay, we could do that tonight. If you come back in January for a second reading?
Yes.
And potentially be effective whenever we say we want the effective date to be?
Yes.
As early as February 9th or whatever Mike said.
If the council's desire is to, you don't know when you want to make this effective, but you think that you, there may be another milestone that will occur, that will create a different effective date, then we can put that into the ordinance tonight. But I don't have any, I'm not sure I'm following what it is that you're waiting for to extend that effective date to.
A safe parking program.
I think some semblance of a safe parking program proposal. I think that's what we're saying.
But we can keep on extending the date and the date and the date, and that's what we've done already.
Right.
We gave, we started talking about this last year. Then we brought it up in February. Frankly, from February to now, there haven't been any actual solutions. And we're giving it, if we give it till March 9th, we're giving it three more months. That's a long extension. So, if people, if there's no plans...
Oh, there's a proposal.
I think we need to start this.
There's a proposal right here. There's a proposal, it's just not in a packaged form. Right here. This one.
I also wanted to...
I don't see it.
Okay, well, I wanted to ask a question, this might be most appropriate for Tina, is if we want, would we need Coastal Commission permission for any of this stuff? Because we would need it for, you know what I mean? If you have a mobile dump site, do you have to go to the Coastal Commission to get permission?
Can I tag on to that too? There was an issue down in Santa Cruz too, with Coastal Commission within the coastal zone, implementing any sort of parking ban. Is that also come into play?
So, I, in terms of the parking, the parking ordinance before you, I'm going to defer to the city attorney as to whether or not that requires Coastal Commission approval. I will say, anything that is land use related, that the council will look at to the future. So perhaps changes to the parking ordinance to allow a safe parking program, or if a dump site is going to be developed in the coastal zone, it will need a coastal development permit. And an ordinance change in the coastal, effective in the coastal zone will need a zoning ordinance change, effective in the coastal zone will need Coastal Commission review and approval. Just a development permit, like for a dump site, may, depending on whose jurisdiction it is, it may be just a city coastal development permit, or a coastal, or Coastal Commission permit.
And if we were to go to the Coastal Commission, what would be your guess estimate as to how long that would take?
So, if it is an ordinance amendment, and so it's basically a change to our implementation plan, I believe they have 60 to 90 days to act on that. I think they can give themselves extensions if they need it. So it could, it could take a couple more months.
Okay, so just to try to be sure I understand it correctly, is we pass an ordinance tonight, and we have the second reading in January, at that point, it goes to the Coastal Commission, and it could be 60 days to 90 days?
No, I, I'm, the, the perm, the ordinance tonight is not the one I'm speaking on. I'll let Michelle answer.
Yeah, I should probably address, if you're talking just about the ordinance tonight. I can tell you that my initial thought on whether or not this ordinance had to go to the Coastal Commission, is that I'm not aware of any concrete authority in the Coastal Act that would require us to send this parking restriction ordinance to the Coastal Commission. With that said, I know that staff received a call today
Mm-hmm.
from the Coastal Commission asserting their position that this did have to go to them for review.
Yes.
I, my staff did some preliminary research, and in fact, in Santa Cruz
Yes.
they did have to go through the Coastal Commission. They agreed, there, there was no litigation, but Santa Cruz did agree to go to the Coastal Commission for a coastal development permit to enact this ordinance.
Yeah.
I, I haven't come to that definitive legal opinion yet. I expect that I will be talking to Coastal Commission legal and asking them for their authority for that. But I will say that they have asserted this jurisdiction in other communities, not in all coastal communities, but at least in some. And so it's clearly an issue that we're going to have to address if this ordinance is introduced and then adopted.
So this would probably be on the basis that it is impeding visitor serving of the coast? From the Coastal Act?
Well, my understanding is that the authority that they used in Santa Cruz, and once again, this is very preliminary, is that they considered this development, not this, not our ordinance, because Santa Cruz's ordinance was a complete ban on all, just RV parking, that that constituted development. Because it increased an intensity, or it decreased intensity of use. And the use that they're talking about is beach access.
And so...
I, I think that that's kind of a tortured reading of that definition of development, but I have not discussed this with Coastal Commission.
But this ordinance does exactly what you just described.
It's a ban.
No, it's not a ban. This is not a ban.
Okay, so...
This is a, let's, that's, I'm glad we brought that up, because that's a very important ma, distinction to make with regard to this ordinance.
Okay.
This ordinance is solely related to traffic, safety concerns, related to oversized vehicles. That is what engineering was asked to do in terms of oversized vehicles. To look at the size, the height
Yeah.
and the width of oversized vehicles to determine whether or not those vehicles created traffic safety hazards. They determined that there were certain criteria associated with oversized vehicles that created traffic safety hazards, and that is all that this ordinance is intended to address. I, I understand that. When, when such, when restrictions are so tight, it's, it's actually a ban on these vehicles of these certain sizes. And I understand that's an attorney speak, and, but the layperson sees it as a ban on vehicles of such size, and, and also parking. And it's 24 hours too, so it feels even more restrictive too. The other thing that we haven't spoken about is people who live here and currently park RVs in front of their house. I received several distressful emails from people who have them and parked out front of their homes, and are happily in unison with their neighbors. That's not even addressed here. So, if we want to support this idea that we are all coming together, maybe we just wait until February, till a safe parking program and a permitting process program can come for those who own them currently and live here, for those who, you know, need to maintain their services in Pacifica to remain a client of the Pacifica Resource Center. And in order for those people who also work here and live in their RVs, maybe we just come back in February, hoping that some semblance is closer to being ready, that some faith-based community folks have maybe a little bit more of a box around what we can and cannot do. At that time, the city can sort of come together as a council, and hip hip hooray over it, yes, we support, and what can we do to help? So, that would be my suggestion, if council wanted to sort of come together on, on supporting our vision that we set back in March. And I think we can accomplish that by passing an amended ordinance with a longer time for loading and unloading, with the delayed, the already built-in expected delay because of the length of time it takes to develop it, to do the second reading, et cetera. Councilmember O'Neill brought up some issues, some, threw out some dates, and my thinking all along has been, that period of time is the period of time that residents who own an RV or oversized
an RV or oversized vehicles, such as a boat that they park on the street, they have that amount of time to find other alternatives for where they're going to park their vehicle.
So-
I don't think it does that. I don't think our timeline does that.
No.
And the other thing is that, don't we want to allow those folks who are currently living in unison with their vehicles and their neighbors out front, the opportunity to potentially park there?
Well, potentially, if, the, the issue of a parking permit process, as I've heard it described, touches on that, then that is, would fall under that, but it doesn't fall under this. I see this as a separate.
No, it's all the same. I mean, it's a parking restriction.
If, they might be living in their unison, but the current code is it shouldn't be on the street anyhow, it should be behind a six-foot fence, right?
No, that was my code.
I brought that up earlier.
Yeah, you did.
Am I correct?
No.
Well, no.
I don't think the fence, yes.
Planning director Waremeister has-
I think, I think the best-case scenario is, is to do it all simultaneously, to have the permitting system ready, and then get the parking ordinance and have it all happen together in a few months. I, I mean, this was already rushed, because we gave the, the task force five months, and now they only had four months, and so why can't we just come together and do things all at the same time?
What timeline do you envision, Mary?
I don't think it would take very long for us to come up with a permitting process, for staff to come back with a permitting process for us, that we could talk about simultaneously with this. So I-
Go ahead and talk about whether or not.
The clarification I would ask there is, is what is the council or Councilmember Beer, when you're saying a permitting process, what are you referring to?
Okay, so that's, that's a very good question, and I'm glad you asked that. There's ways for people to go through coordinated entry with the county, get a case manager through, through Pacifica Resource Center, and then be able to park their vehicle, hopefully in a faith-based parking lot, which would be my, my preference, and then be connected to services, so they're not on the street, and they're not being hassled, and they're able to get housed. So that's, that's like my dream right there. I think, and then have the parking restrictions in place, so they're not parking on the street. That's, that's what I mean. Does that answer your question, Kevin? I mean, you've seen me this week, you've seen how upset I've been this week, so I'm really trying to hold together here.
The, and, and the permitting referred to there relates to with whom?
With PRC.
The PRC, right?
Yes.
Not the city.
Not the, well, the city would probably have to, to issue a permit, yes. So the city would have something in the game there, because you guys, the city would have to issue the permit.
Okay, good, thank you. That helps.
Great.
One thing that I'll say related to this is we're, we're dealing with a lot of absence of information.
Yeah.
And-
Well, right, and I think that's, that's why.
And I, I don't even know really what the future of the unhoused task force is. I don't know what they're thinking about their own governance and the work they're going to do, and, and so in terms of trying to nail down a timeline for locating the locations that these motorhomes would park at, it's hard to know. The first thing that I would do, if we were heading down that path, is I'd want to bring together a meeting with the unhoused in Pacifica task force, the faith, faith group and others to really try to figure out the feasibility and the timeline, and to really define that this is not just the city or a city problem.
Right.
So everybody's in there. So it's, that-
Yes.
A, a, a meeting in the near future could occur to try to start some of that work and get a little bit more specific about a timeline, but there are so many unknowns in terms of timeline.
Yeah.
If the locations happen to be in the coastal zone, we've got other issues potentially, depending on what the permit requirements would be for where the vehicles would park. So I'm just expressing sort of the, what the council is expressing, which is we have a lot of information that we don't have.
Right.
And we're trying to make a timeline decision related to that.
And, and so a couple of options, I think, that the council has to deal with delaying implementation, because I think that there, there's been some suggestion that perhaps a majority of the council is interested in considering the possibility of delaying implementation. There are a couple ways to deal with it. One way that the city manager was, was just sharing with me is when this comes before the council again for the second reading, depending upon what new information or, you know, what staff additional information they can, they can glean in that time, when it does come back for the second reading, council can decide, you know what, we need more time to get more information from staff, let's continue the second reading for another date certain, which would obviously delay implementation. Another way to do it is we could craft language tonight into the effective date of the ordinance to say that the ordinance will become effective and whether, I believe, was it date March 1st or April 1st, there was a?
I said March 1st.
March 1st.
April 1st.
Unless a resolution is adopted by the council prior to March 1st, that would extend the implementation date for another period of time, so that we wouldn't have to amend the ordinance. The ordinance would provide for the council to be able to extend the effective date through resolution, which only takes one meeting to adopt, prior to the, you know, effective date set forth in the ordinance. So that would mean by the second meeting in February, we'd have to put on the agenda a resolution, should the council just choose to do so, extending the implementation date beyond March 1st.
Because even if the task force doesn't want to do any more work, which I wouldn't blame them, because, you know, I just wouldn't blame them, that doesn't mean that we can't still do the work.
Right.
Right, community? Right? Okay, so we can push things forward through all of these, yeah.
Yeah, all of these means, I see that.
I don't know how to make a move, make a motion.
I guess I would make a motion to-
Well, there, there's, there's two issues.
Okay.
Yeah.
One is for section four of the ordinance on page 98 of the packet, where we, where we see exemptions, and that would be in section 1205B1, where it says oversized vehicles parking or standing at an adjacent business or residence for a period of less than, and currently it says two hours, 120 minutes. Was there some discussion to extend that for a longer period of time?
Eight hours?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four? What's everybody's thought, 24?
I have a question on that point. It doesn't address in this particular language any sort of registering with PD around that. This is just meant to be the clock.
This is just a blanket?
You know, I put it there on noon, I move it at 2:00 PM, for example. So I have heard discussion, not at this meeting, but another meeting previously, about the idea of being able to get some kind of permit from PD to load and unload for 24 hours, something like that. Maybe it was back in February when that was discussed, I really don't recall, so.
And that was not included as part of this ordinance?
Right.
So, because we don't have the structure of any such permit program.
Right, and that goes in the permit piece of-
Correct. So my suggestion is if the council is thinking of extending this exemption for more than, I would say, eight hours, then I would think that you would want to consider that as part of a permit process.
Right.
Because I think staff would want to have the ability to better assess the need for that permit and where that permit is going to be located, because there are some streets where, you know, a 24-hour period could be much more hazardous than another street. So I would say purposes of-
It's another permitting process. So actually, shouldn't we just take this out if we're going to do another permitting process? I mean, that's-
Chief, do we already have a process in the ordinance states, construction vehicles with an encroachment permit? Do we already have that in place now?
I'm going to defer that to the folks that issue.
Oh, I keep calling on the wrong departments.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Sam Bautista. We do give out encroachment permits for people who are moving. So especially if they're going to park a, a moving vehicle in front of their house or apartment, we do issue encroachment permits.
Could that just be adapted to use for this purpose? Overnight for an RV to park and load up the stuff for vacation?
It's, for us, it's more of an enforcement, and, I mean, it's two different.
Encroachment permits are generally requested by commercial enterprises, because they're, they're aware of the requirements when they're engaged in commercial activities. I'm not sure that the current process would lend itself to an individual residence who may have visitors who want to park their recreational vehicles in front of their homes for a period of, you know, 24 hours or so. So I, 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 I don't know, because I haven't read the encroachment permit regulations, you know, prior to this meeting, but the likelihood of those regulations allowing public works to issue them for purposes of 24-hour recreational vehicle use is, is probably unlikely. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to assume that that would be allowed.
Reinvent the wheel, that's all.
I think what you just described is another, a completely other scenario. I'm talking about, this is my RV, I need to load it so I can go on vacation, and, and I'm hearing, I heard, two hours is, is not enough time. And so what I, I'm focusing on in terms of what to amend in this section B1 is how many hours? And I'm proposing eight.
I think 24 hours is, should be a minimum.
If, if I may, and, and this might be something Chief Stidle could chime in on, I think from an enforcement standpoint, a shorter duration, so whether it's eight hours or four hours or two hours, that's a feasible enforcement situation. I think when you're talking about a 24-hour permit, you get into a more of a, a complicated enforcement situation, right?
I, I would agree with that, the eight hours, if that's what council chose, would be much easier to enforce. I, I do agree with the notion that if you're looking at extending the period of time to 24 hours, you're probably looking at more of a permitting process.
I, I understand that enforcement is an important issue, but probably on this topic specifically, enforcement would not be the main issue, because you're dealing with folks who are loading up and heading out. It's not some of the challenges that we've had with other types of RVs. So I wouldn't use enforcement as a guiding principle for the hourly allowance of, of RVs needing to load up. That would just be my suggestion for that topic specifically.
And what was just stated about the 24-hour timeline belongs more under the umbrella of a permitting process.
Yes, perfect.
Makes me think that that process as a separate ordinance that we work on addresses that issue, addresses the issue of, you know, gives us a chance to have a meeting, et cetera.
Perfect, but in the meantime, people have to be able to park, so let's talk about making it all happen at the same time. If you want to implement a ban, also allow at the same time people to park. So it doesn't just have to be one or the other, it can be both. How can we do that?
By approving this ordinance tonight with an amendment on B-1 to eight hours, and putting a proposed sunset or effective date of March 30th, unless the council decides to extend that period.
So, do you want, is that your vote?
So what would that look like as a motion?
So before that happens, I, I just feel compelled that I just have to say this one more time, that these are people who have been unable to find any alternative at the present time, this does not reflect a desire to remain vehiculately housed for an extended period of time. These are people who we feel have every right to call themselves our neighbors as such. They are entitled to feel that we should seek to find ways to protect them, along with all the other community members. So if we're going to do this, I really want to make sure that it goes on record, that this council is going to support a permitting process for some kind of parking for these folks. I, I have to, I have to feel okay about that.
You can, you can feel okay with me supporting that.
Yes, I would support that.
And, and that's why the time period, because this is another four months.
I had to make it very clear.
I appreciate that. Sue Beckmeyer?
I'm, I'm looking at Michelle to find out if that needs to be stated in this ordinance.
Did you want, well, that's up to the council.
Right.
I mean, if, if you'd like, if the council would like to include that in the ordinance, we could try to draft something, but I'm not, I'm not sure what you would want in the ordinance. I mean, I think-
I think what you, what you're calling for is a commitment to talk about it and work on it, and make, come, a, a coming together of the community around a permitting process, et cetera, right?
Yeah, a commitment to support that.
Right.
Yeah.
A commitment to support it, not just discuss it.
Yeah.
Some version.
Yeah, I've said that before. So I don't think we need to have that as part of the ordinance, though.
I don't either.
So there's a motion and a second for the-
No, there's no, there's no motion yet.
Oh, she, I thought she made a motion.
No, because they have to rewrite it.
I'm curious what you're thinking, you're just not talking about it.
I thought I've been talking a lot.
Well, it doesn't, I'm just curious, sorry, would you support something like that? That's what we've been asking.
Oh, you're asking if I would support a process?
Yes. Yeah, a safe parking permitting process.
I would support the community working together to develop those pieces that I outlined earlier, which include permitting, which include my father's visiting permits for that, all of those issues.
Yes.
Which involve faith community, which involve, yes, I would support that.
Wonderful, awesome. Yeah, it's been a good night, all right.
I think, though, it has to be funding, okay, that the cost of the city is not negligible. I'm not going to be committing city funds to this, because we don't have any extra city funds.
Well, we don't have that in front of us right now. We're not even talking about that.
No, no, but you have an open-ended commitment from us.
Right.
And I'm not comfortable with an open-ended commitment. I am perfectly safe.
You'll have to point your finger at me.
Okay, I'm perfectly safe, as I said in February.
Yeah.
With safe park.
Yes.
Okay, and all of that.
Right.
But I am not willing to make an open commitment of the city's checkbook for it.
Gotcha.
Because we don't have anything in the checkbook.
Right, understood.
That's fine, and, but we're already spending city funding on it, just because we made it a priority back in March. So there is some funding for it. So-
So I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, so I-
I'd like to move that we accept this ordinance with section, a change to section four dash seven, one, two, zero, five.
B1.
B1, changing from two hours to eight hours, and whatever the corresponding minutes is, it's too late for me to do that math.
And then changing the language in section eight with regard to effective- And then changing the language in section eight with regard to effective date.
Yes.
To say this ordinance shall be in full force and effective on March 30th, 2020 unless the city council adopts a resolution prior to March 30th, 2020, extending the effective date.
Correct.
And this is going to cost the city forty thousand dollars, correct?
And, and we need a second.
Wait, I, I just need to.
Before, before there's a discussion.
Okay.
There needs to be a second.
Second.
Okay.
Now there's another discussion.
Okay, and so this is stating that the city is committing to forty thousand dollars, right?
I don't think it's specific to that. I think that was a ballpark that would potentially be required to do signage, and is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, well, it's just a commitment to money, and so I just want to make it clear that there, there is money for signs, and I understand that we don't want to have an open-ended commitment and that makes people feel uncomfortable, so I understand that, but there is a commitment happening right now.
Our, our estimate is, is to implement the signage program to support this ordinance could cost at least forty thousand dollars.
And I, I, I think if we're talking about a permitting program eventually, just strike the eight-hour thing and include it in our permitting process as a twenty-four hour loading.
So you're okay with leaving it at two hours here?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying strike it at, at all, put, leave it restrictionless until we can figure out, until it can just be included in a permitting process for a loading and unloading stipulation.
The motion said eight hours, so do you, are you wishing to consider the amendment?
That's the, that's the motion, eight hours in this language. The permitting process you're talking about to me is another piece that you committed to supporting.
Be nice.
So we have a vote?
Um, please vote.
Roll call vote?
We'll go by roll call vote.
Show of hands?
No, roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Go.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Martin?
Nay.
Mayor Vatterlaus?
Aye. And that passes forward to one with a no vote by Councilmember Martin, and.
Meeting adjourned.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and thank you for being pleasant and not obstructive.